Good evening, everyone. This is the July 23 meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Role call of the members: Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers. Is absent, Counselor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
Here.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 25, 2018.
So moved. Madam President?
Hold on one second. I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege before we start the meeting tonight. I just want to start with a moment of silence for everyone. I want to take a moment for police sergeant that was laid to rest last week, uh, Waymouth Sergeant Michael Chesna. I know the city of Revere is with the Waymouth PD and their thoughts and prayers during this very difficult time. It's always a tragedy when an officer is killed in the line of duty, especially in such an awful, awful way, so the city of Revere is with them during this very difficult time. If everyone please stand for a moment.
Thank you. Counselor?
Great minds think alike. That said, motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules, all in favor. All opposed. So ordered. Can we take up calendar number three first and then the National Grid issue?
Of course.
Okay. I also want to mention the mayor who's in attendance this evening, as well as Police Sergeant Guido. At this time, we'll take up calendar item number three. Calendar item number three, Mayor Arigo will address the council on the consultant review of municipal finance matters and further on an audit of the parking department and consequent action. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, the council has before it two reports. One is a report that was done by Clifton Larson Allen of internal controls in the city of Revere, and the other is a review of the parking department done by the CPA firm Roselli Clark &amp; Associates. I want to begin by saying that when I took office, I took the oath of office in January of 2016 as mayor of the city, I promised the residents a government that is professional and productive. The results of these reviews are yet another example of our ongoing effort to deliver on that promise. Our residents deserve nothing less than modern, proficient, and effective city government. So the time has finally arrived when I can officially announce the long-awaited results of the audit that I had ordered shortly after I became mayor in January of 2016. The results of my immediate priorities at that time had included gaining an objective assessment of the city's finances. Achieving a stable financial foundation for the city was and will always remain to be one of my top objectives. Accordingly, I commissioned CLA, which is an experienced, nationally-recognized financial consulting firm, to review and document the city's financial activities and internal controls, as well as make recommendations for improvements. This undertaking proved to be an even greater magnitude than I had initially anticipated. When I hired the firm, we expected this engagement to take several months, maybe a year. However, the process slowed as it revealed a history of ineffective and outdated practices, which made it difficult to uncover the true essence of the city's finances. While this was disappointing, and I certainly share in the frustration that everyone had about wanting immediate information, I knew that patience would be a virtue, as it always is, and a detailed review would be more fruitful and would ultimately be in the city's best interest. To refresh everyone's memory, the five items that we had asked CLA to look at were a review of all active funds in our accounting system. We asked them to take a look at our Department of Community Development. We asked them to review some compliance with state law when it comes to purchasing. We asked them to review stipends that are paid to our city employees and review cash receipt policies and procedures. The conclusion of almost two years of painstaking work, CLA has several recommendations that are before you this evening, including, and I'll try not to bore everyone, but a standardized, comprehensive cash receipt policy and procedure manual, including specific information for each department that handles cash, which there was none of. We have a recommendation that the city's auditor send out regular reports of revenue to all departments and reconcile those with our internal records of revenue. In addition, there were a number of other findings around cash management and our cash policies and the lack thereof. So what does all of that mean? These are important points for us to consider in moving the city forward to become an efficient and transparent city government. The assessment was well worth it just to gain these important recommendations. But the real highlight of CLA's careful assessment was discovering that there were 86 separate budgetary funds without any activity, some of those going as far back as 1998, and those funds had a combined cash balance of $2.2 million. This, in fact, was found money for our city. And while a portion of that money has to be returned properly to state and federal funding sources, we expect that a minimum of $790,000 will be swept into our general fund. This revelation alone justifies a $50,000 cost for the CLA assessment. And after reviewing some of the initial findings of CLA's report, especially those around cash management and our lack of policies and procedures for handling cash, I ordered an independent review of the parking department by the CPA firm Roselli Clark &amp; Associates. The results of that review are also before you tonight. And the stark numbers are alarming. Of the city's 274 meters, only 145 were operational. Parking revenue that exceeded $100,000 from 2002 to 2011, peaking over $140,000 in the years of 2010 and 2011, began to decline in 2012, with further drops in fiscal years '13, '14, and '15. That slide continued, and parking meter revenue was down to zero in the 10 months that preceded our review. At the end of the day, this review found an estimated $90,000 in unaccounted-for revenue over the last four years. I've taken the necessary disciplinary action by placing two of our department employees on unpaid administrative leave, and I have referred this issue to law enforcement. At this time, I will refrain from further comment, as there is an ongoing investigation, but other findings include underutilized enforcement, outdated parking meters, confusing, broken, or missing signage, inefficient vehicles, and high ticket-to-appeal dismissal rates. I want this council, and more importantly, the public, to know that they can be assured that it is now my objective, and we have already begun the process, to change the parking department from a dysfunctional operation into a revitalized, modern, and productive model of municipal government. This includes the hiring of our new parking clerk, Jim Rose, and the rollout of new smart meters along Broadway. In 2016, when I came before you and asked for funding for this review, and I ordered the overall assessment of the city's financial operating systems, I suspected that I would find outdated, inefficient procedures that cost our taxpayers and residents money. And regrettably, my suspicions were accurate. While the reviews included some unwelcome news, I hope this summary and our ongoing conversation gives our residents some solace in knowing that we are moving in the right direction, as I stand committed to delivering nothing less than modern, proficient, and effective government, and I remain committed to seeing that become a reality. I assume, and I know that the council is going to have an awful lot of questions, and we'll, you know, we can work with the president to make sure that we're available to answer those questions. I know this is a lot to digest, and these reports will take some time to digest, but please know that we are here and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by letting the council know that since we received this information today, this will be referred to a committee of the whole meeting, which will be held before the next city council meeting at 5:00 PM. So I believe the date, that's August 23rd, Madam Clerk? 27th, sorry, August 27th, at 5:00 PM, the city council will hold a committee of the whole meeting to discuss this in further detail. That way, the council has ample time to review the reports that they received this evening. So that will be the meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could ask the appropriate people from your team to be here to answer any questions. At this time, I'll ask any counselors if they have any immediate things they wish to discuss. Counselor?
Through you, Madam President. Through you to the mayor. First question is, which law enforcement agency?
that the Attorney General's office would need to be informed of this, and we have done that.
So the AG's office has been informed?
They have.
Madam President, could we ask that we have the state auditor and the FBI involved as well? It's been my experience dealing with the Department of Public Works and that issue right there, those are the valued entities that deal with this particular issue. It's very rare that the attorney general deals with this type of issue. In fact, the body that does, and this is why I had asked it in the past, is it is actually the state auditor and thereafter. So if you wouldn't mind also alerting the state auditor to this, because they're the ones who are going to review this product work, and then what they're going to do is deliver it to either the FBI if this federal law is broken, and/or to the state attorney general's office if the attorney general office feels that something has been broken. That's been my experience with the DPW, just a suggestion.
And it was referred to the attorney general's public corruption unit, which is, you know, handles these kinds of issues.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a couple of observations I'd like to make. First off, that initial drop-off in parking meter fees, a lot of you may remember, we removed back in 2013 or so, 2014, many parking meters around the city, particularly in our central business area, and changed it to two-hour parking. We also added, we knocked down the police station, created a lot more parking spaces behind the building. So I think that that could be one reason, maybe not for all of it, but that certainly could be one reason why parking meter fees would drop off. I mean, on a personal level, I'm not a big fan of parking meters to begin with. I don't think that we should be balancing our budget on the backs of people's parking meter fees. If it was up to me, quite honestly, like they did in Melrose recently, they took down all their meters in their central business district and put two-hour parking there. Now, you could adjust that. Some areas could be two-hour parking, some places could be 15-minute parking. The bottom line is, you know, I think some of that could be accounted for because of the removal of a lot of meters. The question I have is, in 2017, when there were 10 months of no meter receipts, I mean, we get monthly revenue reports. Did anybody recognize the fact that there was no deposits going into these accounts? Like, why was there allowed to be 10 months before having an outside auditor, of all things, come in to recognize that?
So on the first issue, and this is pointed out in the report on page six, that while the coin deposits were dropped about 30% from fiscal year '14 to '15, and in '15, they dropped another 56%, 30 meters came offline. So that did not explain the totality of the significant drop in deposits, especially during '14 and '15. In terms of the numbers of no revenue coming in, it was clear, as the new auditor took office in January, that this was something that he had identified, we had talked about, and knowing that we had some cash management policies that we had to review, that's when the audit was kind of concluded, or had been initiated. I will say this, that for cash receipts, and this is in the CLA report, we have a number of other departments that we have to look at. And so those include DPW, Elder Affairs, Inspection Services, Parks and Recreation, and Treasure and Collector. And there is an ongoing kind of analysis of revenue that we're doing. But in the lead-up to that, I was not informed that revenues were at zero, and it was only when we had a new auditor who identified this issue pretty early on when he came in, that we had contacted our outside auditor to discuss this.
But Mike, and I can respect the fact that we have a new auditor, but through you, Madam President, like, I know when I was mayor, I received a monthly revenue report. You could look through it, it would be a red flag for me if I saw zero in an account, in terms of our revenue accounts. Like, I guess that's just my question. Like, somebody along the line...
I'm not sure if there was a zero during '14 or '15, but obviously there were numbers that were down even in '14 and '15.
No, I'm talking about 2017, these 10 months where there were no revenues deposited. Like, I'm just curious why it's July of 2018 and we have 10 months in 2017 where this wasn't identified?
Well, it's clear that, as you'll read the report, it's clear that these issues with revenue and shrinkage go back to fiscal '15.
No, but zero isn't shrinkage. Like, if there's shrinkage, it's hard, if somebody is going to skim off of some cash account somewhere, then, okay, you'll have some shrinkage, and maybe you could analyze that, and that could be a telltale sign of maybe something going on. What I'm saying is, you've placed a couple of people on administrative unpaid leave to my, as best I can tell, I don't know if we received anything that formally from your office that told us that, but I'm told through the grapevine that these people were placed on administrative leave, but, right, right. And, but again, this is from 10 months. I mean, you know, you wouldn't place someone on administrative leave because receipts are down. I mean, if you're, you know, if receipts are down in an account, whether it's Parks and Rec, or Building Department, or Inspection Services, you're not going to place someone on, you know, unpaid leave because the receipts are down. You're going to look at it and say, why are receipts down? I'm more concerned where the breakdown is from 2017, where 10 months of zero parking meters receipts were deposited, why it took an outside auditor in 2018 to find this out.
And to your point...
And I'm not, I don't want to talk about 2014 or '15, I'm talking about 2017...
Well, I know you wouldn't want to talk about '14 or '15, but...
On page three of your report.
Right.
Right.
And again, this is a longstanding issue. When we looked into this department, and it was clear that there were unaccounted-for revenues, it was clear that there needed to be disciplinary action taken. And the report, like I said, I'll give the council the benefit of the doubt, not having all of the details, and not being able to digest all the details in this report, but it's clear that this was an issue that had started prior to '17, prior to '18, and as it was identified, it was dealt with, and it's being fixed.
Madam President, can I please direct your attention, as President of the council, to page three? I'm sorry, I think it's page three.
It is.
Page three. Table one at the bottom, there's 10 months of no parking receipts. So I don't, I know the mayor wants to go back and not talk about 2017, but like, I'd like to talk about a report that this, that our taxpayers paid big money for, and ask why it took an outside auditor. When we get, I know as mayor, I used to get an annual, I mean, a monthly revenue report that I would look at, and we could, and we could start to, you know, I mean, like, I long knew that because removing parking meters, and MGH moving, and Dr. Bade moving, and taking advantage of parking down there, that was going to impact parking receipts. There was no question. We don't have a lot of areas in this city with a lot of parking meters. I mean, you know, this city is not like some of the bigger cities that are being compared to Boston, and Somerville, and places like that. We, you know, and then other places aren't even controlled by the city, so it's outside agencies that would have jurisdiction. So, you know, I'm just, you know, I guess I just want to know that, you know, because we don't get a monthly revenue report, we were supposed to. I know we always sent it up to the council, you know, years ago. I've never received, you know, a monthly revenue report. I've never received a report from Powers and Sullivan, assuming they're still our outside auditors. I've never received a report that, you know, talks about, and I've asked colleagues if they have, that talks about the annual, you know, city audit that we do. So, you know, I am thrilled that the city received a bond upgrade. I am thrilled that, you know, we left the city in a very strong financial position, tripling our stabilization, and, you know, we never really saw, you didn't certify the free cash in 2015, you carried that over to 2016, but that's another issue for another time. I'm just curious why 10 months of no receipts did not get recognized except by an outside auditor?
And as I said, we looked at this as a new auditor came in, he identified some of the decreases in revenue, and the fact is that revenue dropped from 14 to 15, from $71,000 to $31,000.
Madam President?
So if I were looking at revenue, I would think that that would be a cause for concern, but that's, you know...
No, but apparently nobody was looking at zeros. Like, I mean, to look at $31,000...
We were, and that's why we're fixing it.
Excuse me.
We were, and that's why we're fixing it.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, this is not going to be a back-and-forth.
Thank you.
We're not having this moment right now. This, we're going to dedicate time to the committee of the whole on the 27th at 5:00 PM to discuss this. The council does not have enough time to digest this. There's clearly a lot going on, that there are a lot of answers, and a lot of questions that the council has, without question, regarding this issue. One point that I will make on some of the conversation, we do receive the treasurer's reports monthly, the clerk emails them to the whole council.
Correct.
So I know we do have that, so if anyone's wondering, it's in your email. Counselor Rotundo, I know you had a comment, and then again, any other counselors that have comments, and this will go to the committee as a whole.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to make the following points and denote, I just read the last 10 pages of this parking report. With that said, it appears that both in 2018 and 2017, there are significant months in which revenue is missing. That aside, the mayor's own statement and the own, the report itself denotes of the 274 meters, 125 are not working. Additionally, if we take a look back between 2014 and 2015, historical data will note that we had 110 inches of snow. It will also note that the MGH moved into Fester, the Fester Building there, over at Citizens Bank, which was probably one of the largest uses of meters within the area. In fact, they today use much of their parking at the Citizens Bank Building and the municipal parking lot. That might also lend to perhaps some of the reason why some of the revenue was down this year and the year before. But when you note a 26, what's it, 29% decrease and a 50% decrease, in the setting of having almost half of your meters not working, and having 110 inches of snow in 2014 to 2015, you're probably going to have half the revenue. Additionally, Madam President, under Malanson and Heath and Powers and Sullivan, much of what is given to us in this 72,000 document has been reported in the past. In fact, the Malanson and Heath reports underneath Tom Ambrosino, if you can go back and look, demonstrates half of these points. We've just paid $72,000 for something that was already noted in the Malanson Heath report. This was stated before. Much of the point of contact issues and the point of seal issues that are talked about here are reverberated in the Malanson Heath report.
Madam President, just to clarify, I don't believe that there was any report previously done by the city that showed that there were $2.2 million sitting in different accounts, and with $790,000 of it going back to the city. Is that correct, Counselor?
Point of order, Madam President. My point was not about the money, I'm talking about the point of contact. I think it's great that those particular issues from 1990, as you pointed out, in which we got $2.2 million, in which we have to return $790,000 to our office, is a good thing, but it still does not denote the fact that much of what was done here was reticent with the Malanson and Heath product, and I think we should have instituted it from the beginning. You and I agree on those things. That's probably one of the few things that we do agree on, is the mechanism of operation within government. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other final comments? And again, I guess there are no other colleagues that we should speak, so we'll discuss this further. Oh, Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I just got, I'll say most of my comments for the meeting committee, but I just got a question, seeing as a lot of union workers here. As far as the two employees that got suspended, were they was suspended without pay?
They were given administrative leave without pay.
The investigation is completed?
The investigation is not complete.
Okay. Have you hired people for these positions?
I have not.
You haven't hired anybody for these positions?
No.
I just think it's very unfair if, for these two employees to be suspended without pay. Usually the policy is, they get their pay until you find wrongdoings, that you can, they were charged with an offense. So I don't, I feel that they were treated unfairly. Thank you.
So I will say, just to clarify, that we did discuss this, they are union employees, we did discuss this with their union representative, and this is why we've put in place human resources. So in the event that things are, any employee conduct needs to be kind of dealt with, that we have professionals that are doing that, and that's what we have with the HR department. And we have, I have worked very closely with our HR director to make sure that we do what is fair and what is right.
Hold on one second, there are other counselors that haven't spoke yet that want to speak. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I am too upset about the two employees that got suspended. I know one of them very well, he's an honorable man, he's been working for the city as a counselor, as whatever, for 40 years. I just think that you're innocent until you're proven guilty, and I just think that it's unfair for you... And I just think that it's unfair for you to let them go until you really find the facts that are true. So I just wanna say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Any other councilors have final comments? Again, as we own a committee, I've been more than lenient with letting people speak, but now we're getting a little over the top, councilors, with multiple responses. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. Um, Madam President, through you to the mayor. My understanding is that these two employees predate the, um, operation of human resources, but more importantly, um, who is collecting right now, uh, the revenues out of the machines? Who's the one that's doing that?
So in the, the 10 days after the auditor had come in, we collected more money in those 10 days than we had in the last 300, uh, and we...
Was this after his fracture? Because he was out for six weeks, if I'm not mistaken, he had a fracture.
This was during the, the review that was done by Roselli and Clark, and, uh...
Madam President, could you ask the mayor to answer my question?
I believe he's trying to. So let him finish his sentence and then we'll get there.
So, what was the question again, Counselor?
Was this after the, the collection, after the six weeks in which the employee which you now put on paid administrative leave, is that when you started collecting the, uh, the money from the meters?
I believe that the, the audit that was done was after the employee...
No, the collection of the meter, sir. I'm not talking about the audit. You said that you had collected a large amount of money from the meters, and my question is, is this after this person had fractured his leg, in which he was out for six weeks? That's my question.
Well, there was no collection happening, which is pretty clear. When we went in, we started collecting the money, and that was pretty recent.
That would explain the decrease. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilors? Again, this is going to the committee, this is getting...
The injury that he has does not explain any decrease in revenue.
Counselor Sanbudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming that you, uh, you got a legal opinion on this unpaid, it is unusual, I think, for unpaid leave under circumstances like this. At least, I'm not, you know, I'm not aware that that happens a lot, so I'm assuming we've got a legal opinion before you did that.
We've, we've taken the appropriate action.
Okay. I, I take that as a yes.
And I've drawn the appropriate counsel, including legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. This will be going to the committee of the whole meeting, held on August 27th at 5:00 PM. I look forward to seeing everyone there. While we're under suspension at this time, I'd like to take up a late motion, um... Sorry, it's a long one tonight, guys. Calendar item number 40, a motion presented by Counselor Rotundo. And before the clerk reads it, I'll just note, I spoke with Counselor Rotundo before the meeting. He has more than 12 motions on the agenda this evening. And Counselor Novoselski and I had also contacted the clerk over the weekend after we received some emails regarding this issue. So Counselor Novoselski and I will be speaking on it on behalf of Counselor Rotundo. And Counselor Rotundo also said we can make this a motion, uh, on behalf of the entire city council. So, on that note, Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 40, late motion. Motion presented by counselor, by the full city council, that the City of Revere institute a moratorium on any and all operations of National Grid gas unless a life-threatening event takes place, as deemed by the fire chief. Currently, National Grid gas is on strike and numerous unsafe situations have been noted and have taken place since the strike commenced.
At this time, I wanna open it up to some people that are here to speak on it, before we open it up to all the councilors. Counselor Rotundo?
Maybe we add lockout, because they were locked out.
Yes.
They were locked out.
And I believe that was in my verbiage. If we can, we can work on the verbiage in a minute, because we can combine what myself and Counselor Novoselski and Counselor Rotundo wrote, because I think they were all slightly different, but same message. So I'm gonna open this up to the whole council, but first, I know there's some people that wish to speak. So, sir, just name an address for the record.
Hi, my name is John Bonapani. I live in Melrose. Um, I am the president of one of the gas unions that were locked out. Thank you. Um, we were locked out. We did not choose to be locked out. If you're not familiar with, um, label, a, a lockout occurs when an employer decides that they're finished bargaining and they no longer want the employees on the property. Um, and that's what they did. They literally locked us out, locked the doors, wouldn't allow our people to go to work, um, about 1,200 people. Shortly after they locked us out on June 25th, um, we offered to extend the current bargaining agreement. The company refused. Um, we asked that we continue to keep everybody working while the company and the unions continue to bargain. There's two local unions involved in this lockout. Company refused. Um, we, we actually offered a second time on July 5th, when we met with the company again, to bargain. The company did not change its final offer and again, refused to extend the collective bargaining agreement, which would have allowed us to continue to work and provide service while we bargained. So I, I, I just wanna say that personally, I have a long history with the City of Revere. I've worked on and off servicing the gas system in Revere for over 30 years. I, I've been here during the, the storms in the 90s, um, Point of Pines, Broad Sound, Oak Island. I've spent probably during that time, more time out on the road servicing the people of Revere than I actually did in my own home. Um, I've been on more grade one leaks than I could count, um, over the years in Revere. And if you're familiar with gas leaks, grade one leaks are the most dangerous and most hazardous leaks there are. Um, many with explosive levels. Um, I've been on probably more carbon monoxide leaks in Revere than I can remember. Evacuations, um, water in the gas lines, freeze ups, I mean, you name it. Uh, my job is primarily, I'm an emergency response technician, so I'm not a full-time union official. I actually work in the field and I do the union stuff part-time. Unfortunately, I'm doing it full-time right now. I'd much rather be out on the road doing what I do, um, every day, but that's not possible. Um, we do have a lot of members of our local union who live in Revere here tonight, um, and I wanna kinda explain why we're here and what our concerns are. So we're, we're going from city to town to talk about a moratorium. And I know you're probably familiar with that term, because many of the city and towns already have moratoriums during the winter. They don't allow, um, the gas company to come in and dig up the streets. We're asking that each city and town implement a moratorium until the people who do the work, oversee the work, monitor the work, and inspect the work are back to work. That's really what we're asking. The company right now has a 20 to 25-year main replacement program. If you're not familiar with it, it's called the GSEP. They're replacing all the metal pipe with plastic pipe. So they have a lot of contractors out there. Um, lot of work, lot of contractors, and with that, these contractors need oversight. We're concerned that the company will not have the proper oversight for these projects while this lockout is in place. We have members that are called gas contractor inspectors. Their job is to monitor what these contractors are doing and inspect their work. They're locked out. There are also management people who have similar type responsibilities. The company right now is using the management people to fill in for us on the emergency calls. So again, we, we don't think that they're gonna have the proper ins, proper oversight to, to keep track of this. We're all right now observing, um, the types of work that they're doing during emergencies. And with that, we've observed over 20 unsafe and what we believe are hazardous conditions that we've reported, reported, excuse me, to the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities, actual complaints that we've made, with video, with pictures. If anybody wants to see them, I can provide them. I can provide the testimony of the people who witnessed the events, but it's, it, it's happening. That, what they've done is they've backfilled us or replaced us with replacement workers who we definitely don't think have the experience, knowledge, and abilities that our people have. Um, in many cases, they've literally taken people out of office jobs, gave them a quick training, a quick test, and sent them out on the road. And this isn't hyperbole. I would love it if National Grid would get up here and explain what they did or dispute anything I'm saying, because I would wage that they can't. Our people take our jobs very seriously. We have dangerous jobs. We have a lot of responsibility, as I said earlier, some of the types of work that I personally perform as my real job. Um, it, it, it's very serious stuff. We don't think, while they have 12, over 1,200 employees locked out, not performing that work, we don't think it's a good idea that you allow new or replacement projects in the city. And that's what we're asking the cities and towns to do. Each city and town has kinda done it a little different. Um, Braintree passed a, a very strong resolution. Haverhill's passed a resolution. Medford has passed a resolution. Cambridge is voting July 30th, and there's a number of other cities and towns, including Boston, who are working to pass some type of resolution, um, in that vein. So again, if you, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them now. If you wanna meet, talk after, I can provide you with any information I can. But we, we really think it's a good idea that, that the council take up that matter. I really appreciate your time, Madam Chairman, Chairman Omen, and the rest of the city councilors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Can we just get a show of hands for the record on everyone that's here from the union for National Grid? Thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll open... And how many people are from Revere? All residents? Wow. Councilors, we'll start at this end. Counselor Keith?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I've, I've been paying attention to this very closely, and I'm glad that Counselor Rotundo brought this up. I think each one of us are, and I know a number of us were interested in bringing this motion forward. Um, it, it's really, it's really disheartening to see that, um, knowing a lot of the people that work in National Grid, especially the, the, the street workers, it's really hard to live, you know, most people live paycheck to paycheck these days with the cost of living, uh, trying to raise a family, just trying to do the right thing. So to go, uh, almost a month now without a paycheck, and I understand the, the union's able to support you in certain ways, it's probably very difficult. So I, I definitely empathize with you. I've had some neighbors reach out to me in, in regards to this, in the sense that there is actually a, a large replacement being done in Ward 4. And since the lockout, this work is, it was, it was hopeful that the majority of this work would have been done by now. They've been dealing with the work all summer long or early in the summer, and it's been a major disruption. To have, so to have National Grid just lock everybody out, stop the work, and, and, you know, to show a certain level of, um, in, you know, not consideration of the neighbors, having to now eventually, if you do get back to work, hopefully sooner than later, will have to deal with this disruption again, the, the neighbors are very upset. So I know that if we agree to this moratorium, it may stop some, some work in, in, in the process, and it may be a minor inconvenience, but I'm willing to take that risk, because I, I can just imagine what you're going through this summer. People wanna go on vacation, take their kids and, and their families without having to worry about, you know, paying to go to a place like Canterbury Lake Park or wherever it may be. So I totally support, uh, what you're doing today, and I totally will support this, this motion by Counselor Rotundo. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonasso. And Counselor Keith, I'll note that, uh, thanks to Counselor Rotundo, it's now on behalf of the entire council, so...
Thank you, Madam President. We, not only did National Grid, uh, did a disservice to its workers, but they also did a disservice to our community, based on the fact that, General was at the podium, he made mention of the fact that in some cities and towns, they don't allow work to be done during the winter months. So it seems like National Grid takes advantage of that, because we've never used that option. Um, I for one never knew that option was on the table. And, uh, it, it enlightens us somewhat, and it shows you that they weren't dealing with a good, in good faith with communities, based on the fact that they took advantage of the situation. And as far as a lockout with your, your membership and your workers, we for one, as a community, each and every one of us has seen National Grid trucks over our city for the last three months. Uh, what no, actually, uh, National Grid's management never used the best of regard for us. Um, they would just displace an area, take it over without any warning to the neighborhood. They were disrespectful to not only us as a community, but to mostly to our neighbors. And so for these workers to come forward and air their complaints and frustration over the loss of work, which they rightfully so should do, the injustice lies within the type of management that they have. And so it behooves us to, absolutely, this is the easiest thing we could possibly do is a moratorium. And, and I think that, that it shows that we're behind the work, and the men and women of the National Grid who do the work and invite a very important, uh, piece of work that is, as it is. So, uh, I'm all for the moratorium, and I, and I think the, you represented your union well. You stated it very clearly. You didn't add anything to it. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, I'd just like to say that I've been a counselor for three years, and in the three years as a body, we've denied National Grid to do things. They've come up before us and they've asked us to do construction, and because of their poor quality of work, we've said no. So I just wanna say that I've been a union member for 32 years. I support you 100% and I'm for this moratorium. Thank you.
So here we have National Grid, who has well-trained, well-experienced, and skilled workers, and locked them out. Yet they open up a door for unskilled, less experienced workers. I say, why not? Let's lock National Grid out. Let's get them a moratorium and lock them out.
Thank you, Madam President. To all, nice to, believe it or not, it's nice to see you all. Although, and everybody knows that we already have some sort of moratorium in effect that we put in effect, uh, last month or the month before, uh, but the wording on it still allows it, has an open door for it. And what, you know, in reading, um, the letters and the resolutions that I've received from, from Joe, um, the best one that I like is the Braintree Resolution. And I would like to see us use the Braintree Resolution as the boilerplate and change anything that says for Braintree to Revere. And, you know, like I said, it may slow things down for us and some of the roadways that we have, because National Grid, I, I'll tell you, this is the first year, the first year that I know that we've said no to National Grid several times, as Counselor McKenna said. That we're sick and tired of the way they were treating us, coming in and say like, they're, they're God's gift to the world. Well, they're not. They're not. And we, we voiced our opinion and we did it. And they were upset, and we made the move. We made the move on Revere Street when they, when they messed up the, uh, store owner's electricity. We, we made them step back and realize that we meant business. And I think we'll stop meaning business, like I said, even though we already did a moratorium, I don't mind reinforcing it with the Braintree Resolution. And I'd like to make a substitute motion that we use the Braintree Resolution as the boilerplate for Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President, um, I'm sorry, I'm actually sorry you have to be here tonight. You should be working. And as a, uh, former police officer for over 32 years, I worked details for many of you guys that are out there. And I know how skilled that you are and, because I've worked with the subcontractors too. So I understand, um, uh, it's scary to think that these managers are, are doing your job and that these contractors that are coming in. Uh, I also was a, a vice president of the patrolman union for many years, negotiating. And I think it's just, I don't, I, I can remember strikes with Verizon and New England Telephone, uh, but I, I don't, I don't, maybe you can answer. Uh, the, the last time a, a lockout, I, I haven't... 25 years ago? I think that's a disgrace. And, uh, it, it's really, I, I bet, I bet it really taught you a lesson.
I bet it really taught you a lesson. So of course, I'm 100% for whatever you guys want, and hopefully they'll get the message and get you guys back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So let's start with the risks. Let's start with the motion. I wholeheartedly support the motion because we have cases of unlicensed equipment out on the street right now, being used by people who claim to represent National Grid. We've got no supervision near high-pressure lines that could impact neighborhoods, our residents. This is all with a company that last year made $3.6 billion, taking advantage of a $1.6 billion tax credit. And they're locking out their employees, taking away in some cases, health insurance. I just recently read about a case where one employee of National Grid was cut off his wife's cancer medication, life-saving cancer medication, at $8,500 a month. This is a company that makes... That last year made $3.6 billion, and their profits so far this year are up 24%. Yet our residents right here that work for this company are locked out. It's a disgrace, and I wholeheartedly support this motion. Thank you very much.
What troubles me is when you go to Chelsea today and you take a look over in Chalmers Ave, I don't know if anybody's seen what was going on over there. The resident was standing right out on the porch, and... Correct me, I'm a nurse, so you're going to have to help me out here, guys. And they were, I guess, blowing the line that was full of gas. The resident's standing right there, this gas is blowing through this yellow pipe, a little two-inch pipe. And I can hear the guys in the background, "Yeah, that's real smart. You've got PCBs, gas, and all the other stuff coming out of it." This guy was probably about 65, 70. He probably took a real good whiff of it. God forbid he doesn't go to the hospital tonight. And I take a look at what happened in other parts of the state. Seen you guys on the line, I believe it was in Malden. You know, this is a little personal to me because I grew up with David Dell, and I know he works with you guys, and he's a dear friend, he's a childhood friend. No one wants to be locked out. No one wants to worry about their child's health care. And you certainly don't want to have to worry about whether you're going to make your mortgage or your rent. So you can see by all my colleagues, left and right, even the Republican, they're with you.
You had to get that Republican stuff in there. Listen, I don't grandstand, but I also... I don't agree with the lockout, and I sympathize with you guys, and I support you. But I'm not looking for any accolades. You deserve this, and we're certainly going to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. And if I may, speak from the chair briefly on this. Thank you. You know, I work in Malden, and every morning when I drive to work and every night when I drive home, I see your guys out there on Commercial Street and out on Medford Street. And they're out there in that heat wave last week when it was over 100 degrees. They're out there in the rain, they're out there in the cold. And what kills me is that, the things like my colleague Consul Rizzo mentioned, health insurance. People have families, people have responsibility to themselves for their own health care. If we can't protect our residents in terms of that, what are we doing? So this is a huge responsibility of the city and the city council to make sure that our residents are protected in many ways with this. Number one, their safety and the work that's being done in the street. And number two, the workers that work for National Grid and that are residents, if we don't have a voice for them, who does? So I think that this is incredibly important, and you know, it's a huge issue, and so many councillors reach out to the city clerk to put this in. So I think my colleague Consul Rotundo and Consul Nowosowski, as well as the city council as a whole is adopting this. And I look forward to working on Consul Nowosowski's substitute motion, as well as the late motion that'll be taken up by the council of the whole. At this time, I believe we should probably take up the substitute motion first, followed by the motion. Anyone have any comments on the substitute motion?
Madam President, do we have a copy of this Braintree motion?
Sorry, it was emailed to me, too.
I'd like to see something, but, you know, I'm sure it's fine, but I'd like to see.
And the other thing, Madam President, if... Why don't we take the Braintree Resolution, drop mine, so we can just dispatch with that?
So we'll take up the substitute and place this on file?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to actually have the clerk, if she has a moment, read the Braintree Resolution, and we'll just take note that Braintree will be replaced with the city of Revere, and any other applicable changes that we will make.
Again, to the...
Oh.
A resolution in support of United Steelworkers District 4 Local 12003 Boston Gas Workers Union, whereas National Grid serves many residential and commercial natural gas customers within the city of Revere, and whereas the United Steelworkers Local 12003 District 4 Boston Gas Workers Union represents the men and women who operate on gas lines and projects within the city of Revere, and whereas many members of United Steelworkers Local 12003 District 4 Boston Gas Workers Union live and work in the city of Revere, and whereas the United Steelworkers Local 12003 District 4 Boston Gas Workers Union has been bargaining in good faith to achieve a fair and equitable contract with competitive wages and benefits for its members, and whereas the safety and well-being of National Grid gas customers and the general public is contingent upon high-quality and well-trained employees performing services and line inspections on gas projects, and whereas a prolonged lockout of National Grid gas workers raises safety concerns for the general public and strains service to National Grid customers. Now, be it therefore resolved that the city of Revere City Council urges National Grid to end the lockout of its gas workers so that the gas line inspections, services, and repairs may continue to be performed by qualified and properly trained employees, and be it further resolved that the city of Revere provide heightened scrutiny and safety inspections and monitoring on all National Grid work being done during the lockout of National Grid's workers, and that no new permits for gas construction projects shall be issued by the city of Revere, and be it further resolved that the Revere City Council urges National Grid to agree to a fair and equitable contract that provides for competitive wages and benefits commiserate with the technical skills and qualifications possessed by the members of the United Steelworkers Local 12003 District 4 Boston Gas Workers Union.
Did the union rep have any comments? Could you just approach the mic so they can catch you? Thanks.
Where it says 12003, our union is actually 12012-4.
So we'd add both? So on behalf...
Just the one.
Just the one?
Just the 12012-4.
Understood. So we'll replace the Braintree to Revere and the correct number for the union?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any councillors have any comments on the resolution?
Roll call.
Roll call?
On the resolution, Consul Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Powers is absent. Consul Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
Real quick. And we'll also place calendar item number 40 on file. We'll have a brief two-minute recess to let people exit, and then we'll return to the regular order of business. Out of respect for the police chief that is here, while we're under the suspension of rules, I also ask that we take up calendar items 41 and 42. Madam Clerk, can we start with calendar item number 41?
Calendar item number 41 is a late communication from Captain O'Hara, Revere Police Community Services, requesting approval of a conflict of interest form for Deanna Mantia to enable her to work for the Revere Public Schools as a health teacher and as a camp councillor/mentor.
Chief Guido?
Very quickly, we received a grant from the district attorney's office to run a summer camp for two different weeks. And the people who work the PAL also will be part of this. And to make sure there was no conflict of interest, we're asking that they receive special employee status. I actually thought this was for the whole PAL League, so if we could vote that, that whenever they work PAL, that they have special employee status, that would be wonderful.
Madam President, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, we have to have specific names in order to get the specific clearance?
We have.
It actually, it's not... It doesn't run... Special minutable employee status does not run with a specific employee, but rather the position?
So Madam Clerk...
So it's all the positions?
Good. PAL, Police Activities League?
So that would be calendar items 41 and 42 together, Chief?
Yes.
So Madam Clerk, may we call the role for all city employees on... What'd you say, on the PAL League?
Thank you.
Got it.
In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, shall the city council approve special minutable employee status for PAL? Consul Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Powers is absent. Consul Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the special minutable employee status has been approved.
Thank you, Chief. Any other councillors have any comments? All right, at this time, we'll return to the regular order of business. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered? There's just one more department head that's here to speak on something. Can we take up calendar item number 21?
Calendar item number 21, communication from the Director of Finance relative to the acceptance of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20 as amended.
Yes, if I may. What the communications is asking for here is that the city council pass 32B, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws. And the reason this is a request, because this is the first step in setting up what is called a Other Post-Apartment Benefit Trust. Just to bring you up to date and to remind you that when we got our S&amp;P report for the upgrade in the bonds, one of the weaknesses they quoted was the fact cited, and I believe it was on page three, that we didn't have a OPEB, Other Post-Apartment Benefits Trust Fund, that we, on an annual basis, contributed to. So that this was a weakness in what they felt was a weakness in our financials. So with that, at the time, I said I would go out and I'd start the process. This is the first step in the process, is the approval of this section of the law. The other part of it, too, is that, since this is the first step, what the... I believe what the city is intending to do is put it into a fund with the State Retirement Board, which I've communicated to you, and have them oversee the trust itself. So it also belongs in what the state allows and which is allowed under the section that is passed. So it does allow for us to, with the approval of the State Benefits Police Trust Fund, I forget the... State Retireee Benefits Trust Fund, with the approval of their trustees, we'd be able to put the money into that account. And then as we give it over to them, they actually invest as far as... And they have a good rate of return, and there's a lot of eyes overseeing the trust. So it goes in with them. So that's what we're looking to do.
Any councillors have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think what we're talking about, a quarter of a million-dollar expenditure, it should go to Ways and Means. I hope that's your intention tonight. I don't think this is another one of these emergency motions that we need to jump right on. It's my opinion.
Whatever the pleasure of the councillors.
Ways and Means? Ways and Means.
Thank you very much, councillors.
We'll return to the regular order of business. Calendar item number four, public hearings.
Calendar item number four, hearing called as ordinary on the application of Sunrise Development LLC, 12 Arbor Lane, Roslyn Heights, New York, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to reconstruct and extend a non-conforming structure for the purpose of constructing a 162-room hotel at 58 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Any proponents here this evening?
Madam President, honorable members of the council, for the record, my name is Emilio Favorito, 7 Dawes Street, Boston, 02125. I represent the project proponent, Sunrise Development, who are here seeking a special permit to construct a 162-room hotel at 58 Revere Beach Boulevard. The premises are currently occupied by what used to be known as the Ocean View or Casa Del Mar Motel, and is directly adjacent to the hotel, this august party, so I'll fit to approve last year. Without further ado, I would like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Ning Lu, who is the project architect.
Other proponents?
I'm Ning Lu, the architect for this proposed hotel. We're privileged to have the opportunity to work with everyone here again on the second hotel on the Revere Beach. Same as the neighbor, this site is right off the beautiful sand beach. It is near the subway station and also near the airport. Either from the land, the sea, or from the air, the character of this building can make an impact to all travelers. We have adopted similar design approaches that include considerations of the context and identity, and the vision of the community and the city of Revere. Next page. Next? Next page? So as you can see, the two hotels are right next to each other. So the one to the right, that's the hotel we're proposing. Different from the neighbor, the second hotel had some more challenges. The site of this second hotel has an irregular shape with a much shorter frontage because of the pizza shop in the northeast corner. The setback requirement of that corner and the shorter frontage create an apparent disadvantage for the site. One of the considerations the mayor and the city's community development had brought up is the connection between the Backstreet Ocean Avenue and the Revere Beach Boulevard. The first hotel has a connection through double-height ocean frontage with restaurant entrance from the Ocean Avenue in the rear. Our challenge with this site is that with a shorter frontage, how can we achieve the connection between the Revere Beach Boulevard and the Ocean Avenue? The first hotel takes upon the language of the sand beach using solid horizontal angled balconies. The geometry appears very dominant. How can the second hotel coexist with the first hotel in harmony, and yet present its own strong character that reflects the culture of the city of Revere and this designated area as creative district? Next page? Next? Next page?
If I may, just quickly?
Yes.
This will be going to the zoning subcommittee?
Sure.
So any really in-depth details of the plans can be reviewed in subcommittee?
Okay.
So just if you can give us a brief overview on the project, and then we can really dive into this during that meeting?
Sure, great.
Thank you.
Can we flip to the image, for the rendered image? The next few pages? Can we skip through that? When we presented the initial concept, Mr. O'Brien expressed that, if we may use a metaphor, let's say, if... let's say, if the first hotel would be a sand sculpture, then the second hotel shall be about water. We took that in and further developed the building facades into feasible wavy patterns. These unitized glasses or panels capture the color and the reflection from different angles, which are originated from the waves of the ocean. Same as the ocean, the facades would certainly reflect the ever-changing moods of the sky as the ocean waves do. Since the building faces east and west, we can imagine that at the sunrise and sunset, the building may appear to be a golden-lit lantern that relates itself to the color of the surroundings, the sun, the cloud, and the sky. Next, next. To differentiate itself from the neighbor, we introduced a wide-open archway connecting the rear Ocean Avenue and the front beach side. Next. Visually and physically, next. By having this archway, the first-floor hotel frontage is actually extended, the hotel drop-off traffic reduced, and an open area with landscape and seating features not only connects and activates the Ocean Avenue in the back, but also offers a place or a focal point for the meetups, gatherings, and fun activities in front of the hotel. This helps to make the building more inviting to the pedestrians and beach public. In response to the mayor's request for event space, we also reserved the frontage on the second floor facing ocean as event space with removable partitions to accommodate different sizes of events. That's approximately four thousand square foot that has spectacular ocean views for any functions. Four thousand square foot, yes. Another feature that differentiates this second hotel from the first is the visible guest elevators that can be spotted from the beach, and at the same time provides hotel guests superb views to the beautiful beach landscape the city of Revere has to offer. Next. This is archway, next. These bubbly identifiable elevators go through a double-height A-train space with skylight in the hotel lobby, and rises all the way to the top of the building. The movement certainly differentiates itself from the steel sand sculpture next door. At our last meeting with the mayor, he had brought up his concerns on how to treat the Ocean Avenue side so it can be of interest to the public rather than the backstreet wall. From the ideas generated from that meeting, we found images of roller coasters. And place them on the Ocean Avenue side, these large images can provide seating opportunities and photo opportunities for pedestrians and tourists to stop and have a moment of reflection back into the glorious past in the history of the city of Revere. This is going to be a one-hundred-and-sixty-two-key, eleven-story hotel with about eighty-one accessory valet parking space on-site and seventy-five event parking space off-site. Each hotel room floor plate would have approximately seventeen keys due to the constraints of the irregular shape of the site. The zoning square footage is about seventy-eight thousand square foot. Although the building is a bit taller than the neighboring hotel, it is designed so that it doesn't look taller visually, as we kept similar height at the front and set back on the top of the building. We hope this new hotel will enrich the existing beautiful landscape the city of Revere has to offer, and contribute to bringing a positive impact to the local community for the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents here this evening?
Madam Chairman, members of the council, the mayor has submitted a letter of support, which each of the members has already received. I would only emphasize my support for the mayor's position. You may recall, almost exactly a year ago, Ms. Lu presented the very imaginative design for the first hotel, which was unanimously approved. And I think she has brought before you a design for the second hotel, which is compatible but still distinctive. And what's very important from our perspective is that not only is the architecture complimentary, but the program of the hotel is. We have been wanting a restaurant and lounge on the Revere Beach Boulevard that is open to the public, that was provided in the first hotel. There is an absence of ocean view function space, which is now being provided for the second hotel. And I must say, the cooperation between the two management teams, although they are distinct, has been mediated through Ms. Lu's involvement, and the cooperation has been quite remarkable, including outreach to the MBTA, which will deal with all of the function-related parking through the underutilized MBTA garage. So I compliment them for their communication coordination, and I commend this project to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the council's edification, I did forward that email to the clerk just now, because I don't believe she received it, and will add that letter as a proponent. Any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close outside of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Anybody opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close outside of the hearing. Any counselors? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is in my ward, and I just, I just love the project. I think it's exciting to see this unique design come to Revere Beach finally after all these years. I think it's going to be a staple on Revere Beach, and it's going to attract a lot of people. I'd just like to ask some questions. Could you come up, please? So in the past, we've had developers come into our city, and we've had, and they've presented their projects to us. And what they erected was these projects that weren't what they originally planned. Is this going to be exactly the way it's going to be as, when you build it? Is it going to be exactly the way that you're showing this to us now?
The, I think it's going to be the same, except that the glass panel, when we designed the material, we might explore the, between glass panel unit, glass unit versus paneling unit, to make a good, basically, to get the best combination so that it can be cost-efficient, but it will be reflective, so it will be the, carry through the concept from the initial design.
Okay, thank you very-
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. First off, let me say, I support this project. Castle Mar has been a thorn in the side of the city and beachfront residents for a long, long time. And, you know, unlike other projects that have been put before us, you know, this is going to be no negative impact with respect to our school system. In fact, you know, it's, it's an absolute win because of the tax rate that you'll fall into, and the rooms tax, and the meals tax, so it, you know, it's a great thing. The two questions I have, Madam President, through you, is, what is going to, what will the name of the hotel be? Who will be managing the hotel? What is the brand that we should expect? And if I could have a little more clarification on the parking, I'm just not clear on the parking. You're going to have, you know, it calls for, I believe, yeah, so, so it calls for, yeah, you're required to have, on a hundred-and-sixty rooms, a hundred-and-twenty-two spaces, but you're going to have eighty-one onsite and seventy-five off. So as a practical matter, how is that going to work? Because, as you know, I mean, forget sandcastles, that's a whole nother issue, but just regular summertime here in the city of Revere, when people like to use the beach, our own residents that like to go down and use the beach. You know, seventy-five more cars parked in that area is going to take a lot of spaces up if they're not accounted for somewhere else. So how will, how can we be assured that there'll be the eighty-one spaces that will be within the project itself, within the footprint of the project, but also that those additional vehicles will not be parked, assuming you're at a maximum? I mean, I don't know what the combination is, or what the formula will be for people using that hotel. Are they going to be driving themselves there? Are they going to be coming by cab or Uber? Are they going to be, you know, I'm not sure. But I just want to be sure that those seventy-five vehicles that were, you know, they're being pledged to be kept somewhere else will actually do so.
Counselor, your concerns are certainly well-founded and have been previously expressed by the administration, who requested that we hire an outside consultant to perform a traffic demand management study, which we expect to have had completed and be in a position to present the results of prior to the, what I presume will be the hearing before the zoning subcommittee.
Okay.
And remind me what the first question was?
The management team, the brand?
Oh, it's really premature to attempt to identify and sell a brand. At least one of the principals involved in the development team owns an interest in the hotel property in New York, but in terms of whom the hotel would be pitched to, who's likely to come in management and manage it, not, it's really not in a position to address at this point in time.
Okay. Well, I know this is going to subcommittee. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, counselors. And I will remind my colleagues, we have a very lengthy agenda this evening that we're not even a tenth of the way through, so this will be going to committee. Counselor Nowoselski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, one of my concerns was the same as Counselor Rizzo about those seventy-five off-site spaces. I'm very concerned about where that off-site's going to be. Mr. O'Brien?
Just to clarify that, the parking ratio for hotel guests itself is approximately point-five, which has been approved for other hotels, including, for example, the Revere Beach Parkway Hotel. So we do not expect that the requirement will go beyond that for hotel guests. And all of the parking is going to be done by valets, so nobody will be able to park their vehicles on the Boulevard, on Ocean Avenue, or otherwise. The seventy-five spaces are exclusively function-related. They are in off-peak periods, they will be at the garage when the garage is underutilized, and guests will be shuttled back and forth from the hotel to the garage simply for functions which take place periodically, and typically in the evenings and on the weekends and holidays. So those are not guests of the hotel, those are patrons of the function space.
If I may, Madam President, through you to Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Are you talking the MBTA garage?
Yes.
In Wonderland?
Yes. And there'll be a shuttle service run by the hotel between the garage and the hotel. And those functions typically take place in the evenings and in off-peak periods-
Right, they do. They do.
-when the garage is underutilized and the traffic is less of an issue.
Okay, one other comment, that was my question, but I, what I want to say is, like Counselor McKenna said, that's in her ward. That used to be in my ward, and my ward is just on the other side of the railroad tracks, and a lot of my constituents are going to be looking at the back wall. So I'm glad that they are putting some kind of design back there, to, you know, they're losing their view of the beautiful beach, but, you know, at least they get to see some history on that wall, on both hotels, right? Both buildings?
And I would just add, Counselor, on that point, there is a rather grand entrance from Ocean Avenue to the Boulevard through the building itself, which we-
Right, I see that.
Yeah.
I see that. But both buildings are going to be steel, if I'm correct? And, you know, but I'm just glad to see that, you know, they're not leaving a blank wall there, that our people will be able to see something nice. Push button.
The difference is, the first hotel is steel, the second hotel is going to be concrete. And then the, the back wall for the first hotel has basically the art exhibit, it's like art exhibition, but then second hotel, it's the roller coaster images that reflect the history.
That's okay by me, as long as there's something there rather than just a blank wall.
Yes.
You know, because I think the folks deserve that much.
Sure.
So with that, I'll save it for committee, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Listen, I'm thrilled that this site is going to be cleaned up with two hotels, it's a, it's a great thing. But what I will say is, for subcommittee, I want to know a lot more about the investment group, and so I want some particulars that night. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
You mean Rotondo?
No, sorry, looking at Tony, talking to you.
Not the first time. Thank you, Madam President. Through you to, I believe it's Mrs. Lu. The question that I'm asking, if it can be provided, because it's probably going to be going to my committee, several things. One, where is the product going to be bought? Is it going to be panelized and brought overseas? My concern, if that's the case, is considering the current geopolitical issue and tariffs, and more importantly, what is the current RevPA, as well as other economic particulars that I believe Counselor Zambudo has asked, and who is going to be building the building? And lastly, most importantly, I'm surprised that we don't have a name of who's going to be actually handling the hotel. My experience has been that generally we have a notification as to who's actually going to be managing the hotel. That has been my historical, you know, knowledge. If you can provide something, that would be great.
So the investors, they already have hotels in New York that they self-manage, and for the branding that you also, one of the city council mentioned earlier, it hasn't been finalized. The investors are going through different hotel brands to find the best fit, and the first hotel also went through that process. Eventually, they adopted the Wyndham Future, it's a new future line. And then, so right now, because we can no longer use Wyndham, and they are doing the research on that. Because they already have self-management experience in the past, so we don't think that will be an issue.
So for my colleague, just for the committee's sake, as he was asking for that, I would be grateful. Thank you.
Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. Back in the meeting of May twenty-third, I asked that, what was going on with the previous proposal? I didn't see any activity occurring, and to me, I was wondering, and I think many people in our community were wondering, what's going on? Now, are we going to be that same impasse right with this new development? Are we, are we going to, are we going to go through and get something actually done?
Counselor, I'll address that. I think your questions you raised in May were the result of delays due to some unusual circumstances, including the retirement of the then-general Management for that property, as well as the unexpected length of the DCR review of the process, which meant that the construction plans initially submitted in two thousand seventeen needed to be updated in two thousand eighteen for the new building code. So it took an inordinate amount of time. That lesson was learned for this hotel, and I do not expect that experience to be repeated. DCR is now much more familiar with what is being proposed, we have a much better sense of what DCR is expecting. You will note that on the site of the first hotel, there are excavators already located. Where our building commissioner had not been on vacation last week, construction probably would have begun last week, but it should be done this week with the issuance of the foundation permit. So all of those issues, which were, as you properly noted, not insignificant issues, have now been addressed and resolved, and I don't expect they will be repeated on the second hotel.
What I asked when I came into the chamber this evening, are the developer, is that a picture session out there? I, myself, saw the equipment there, and it looks ready to go, but I want to see them digging in the ground and tearing down that Castle Mar, and I want to see them making some sort of movement. And the least they could be developing, can do, is to notify us, when there's been an impasse, and there's some sort of minor delay, can they at least acknowledge that to the city council?
Indeed.
So we can intelligently refer this type of information to our constituents.
Indeed. I might just say, with regard to the demolition of the Castle Mar Hotel, because of the coordination between these two- between these two ownership teams, the Castle Mar Hotel is going to be demolished very quickly so that it can be used for lay-down for the first hotel construction. So you'll see an improvement, as the Counselor has suggested, very soon on that property as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other counselors?
If I may, very, very briefly, and again, this will be going to the zoning subcommittee, I just want to say, it's so nice that an architect like Ellen A. takes so much time to look at our community. I think it's really beautiful that all these proposals took so much time to think about the city of Revere's history and really the beauty of the beach and use that as their inspiration for the project. So I think that's really great, and I look forward to speaking to it more during subcommittee.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Robert Einello, 727 Revere Beach Parkway, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to reconstruct and modify a pre-existing non-conforming structure for the purpose of constructing a three-story building utilized for a self-storage use at 727 Revere Beach Parkway.
Any proponents here this evening?
Good evening, counselors. Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent Bob Einello relative to the property at 727 Revere Beach Parkway on this non-conforming special permit request. You may remember that we were before you last May relative to an expansion of this building to add a self-storage use. This is where Mr. Einello previously had his electrical business. We're here tonight after consulting with the projects engineers and architects about redesigning the proposal to actually make it solely for self-storage use. There will be some modifications from the prior proposal, but they were really only to the interior of the building, interior, excuse me, interiorly, making the building to be three floors, just really re-apportioning the floors. We are not making this building taller. We are not expanding the footprint, and I want to be very clear on that. This is not a bigger building from the prior proposal. It's about utilizing the interior space in a better way. We should think this is going to be a better project for the neighborhood in the whole. It's not going to have an active electrical business, people going in, in and out day in day. It will actually be the self-storage use that has much less traffic and really going to be something that we think is going to have improvements to the neighborhood over our prior proposal. And then finally, I just want to reconfirm that this is not going to be a residential use here and that there is going to be no public entrance to this building off of Taft Street. I know that was important to the neighbors. The only thing that might be there is an emergency fire exit that the fire department would require us to put in. With that, we're happy to answer any questions and get into more detail at subcommittee.
Thank you, Attorney Rhodes. And this will be going to subcommittee. Any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? And anyone, just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Delma Zerenzio. I live on 140 Taft Street. I've been, I'm 90 years old and my husband's 95. I've been there over a century, but let me tell you something tonight. I was opposed, I didn't want this because Mr. Salerno, which is the other building, came to you about 25, maybe 30 years or more, and said that he wanted his building extended out. When he came to us, we said, okay, and as long as you have it, even with the other building. Well, at the time of the councilman that was with us, she said, don't worry about it. Well, as it was going up, I noticed, I called and I said, I think he's going too high. So now, he did go very high, and he went about as high as Einello's building, and there was nothing we could do about it because you can't knock it down. I'm here because we got a letter two weeks ago saying that he was putting it another two or three feet up, and it was, someone called Joanne McKenna, which she's a representative, and she said, she knew nothing about it. Well, she got in touch with them, and we find out, I don't know what happened anyway. And then we got another letter Tuesday saying they don't, oh, he wanted to go up higher, higher than three feet of what he said he wanted to do. This is what happens every time someone comes for a permit. You people all know that. But I feel that if he gets in there now, that he will do something else. At first, he wanted houses, anything, and thank you, councilmen, for turning it down. But, you know, it's not the greatest-looking place, but it's peaceful, and all of us are very happy there. I've been there so long that we had no trouble. Now he moves out, and who's going to take here that building from 8:00 in the morning or whatever time at night? You hear trucks, you're going to hear trucks, and you're going to hear banging, and you'll, I don't, I was not far from the beginning, but we said, we'll give it to him. Do I trust him? No. Do I want him there? No. Did he move? Yeah. You know what he should do? I say, he lives in Marblehead? Go to Marblehead and put that place up. He said he's going to make it beautiful? Nothing is beautiful like that. I've seen other places on the Parkway, and believe me when I say this, it is not beautiful. So I don't feel that anybody that comes out of our city makes anything so beautiful. And I want to tell you, I never was up here. I only know a handful of you people, and I just hope that we do something about it because these builders come in and they do what they want after. And, I mean, you know that. I don't have to tell you. And I love, love Revere, so I want to move out. I'm too old to move out. And believe me when I say this, thank you for everything. And Joanne McKenna is top-notch in my book. She, I know, I know, you're laughing, she is. And when you call her, she's there, and she's right on button. And I know if it passes, it's not her fault, but I'm going to tell you tonight, thank you for everything. Thank you all, right here.
Thank you.
When I say I don't trust him, believe me.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I don't trust him. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor.
Any other opponents here this evening? Anyone else opposed? You got to show of hands for the record. Is there anyone else here that's for this issue? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This time, we'll open up to any counselors. Counselor McKenna.
So can I just clarify everything that's gone on in the last three weeks? So this has been going on for about a year and a half now. First, they wanted to build apartment buildings, and it was taken off the table. Then he wanted to do storage units. A letter did go out, and it was, it was, it didn't explain what they really want to do. What they want to do is inside, the first floor is 18 feet because they had to get the trucks in there when he had the business. What he wants to do is he wants to lower the first floor to 10 feet. So it's going to be 10, 10, and 10, 30 feet. That's what we agreed on as a community, all right? So they're not going to do anything structurally outside. They're only going to do what they said they were going to do when we had the meeting, and then we had it when we agreed, the council, when we all agreed. So you're not going to get deceived. I'll make sure of it. It's only going to be inside. What I want to know, Corey, is who, now that the business is gone and Bob's gone, who's going to take care of the building? Do you have someone that's going to take care of the building? That's, and the hours, I forgot the hours that this is going to run for. So could you explain that?
Bob is actually going to run the business.
Oh, great. Excellent.
This is going to be a new business for him, and I think there's going to be onsite, onsite employees, and one onsite at all times the business is open.
So great, great.
What were the hours?
I think that it closed at, what, 10 or 11, didn't it? Was something like that at night? That was earlier than that. Oh, that's even better. Okay. I don't know, I don't remember the times.
Honestly, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Can we have it for subcommittee?
Yeah, we can bring it to subcommittee. We'd be happy to.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to assure the lady, the nice lady, that we're going to hold onto this. You're going to have exactly what it says, and you won't be deceived in any way. I can promise you that.
Any other counselors? Zoning.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Ash Family Limited Partnership, 31 Scott Lane, Wakefield, Mass., requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for above-ground storage of 5,640 gallons of gasoline contained with 100, contained within 188 vehicles to be parked in a parking garage at a 145-unit apartment building at 320 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Any proponents here this evening?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the city council. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeoni, 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts, this evening representing Ash Family Realty, Ash Limited, Ash Family Limited Partnership. They are the owners of the property and have been for many, many years. The application seeks a 148 storage license in concert with the proposed buyer of the property, a Chara Development. A Chara Development, as you know, received the special permit for mixed-use building, knocking down two, three existing buildings, receiving a special permit to modify non-conforming structures and non-conforming uses from this honorable body, allowing for the new construction of a mixed-use building with six stories, 145 units, and two commercial units. The application, as the Counselor well knows, must be reviewed by the Revere Fire Department. Significant plans were provided by Cube Three, who is with me today, along with Rick Salvo from Engineering Alliance. They have been reviewed and approved by Deputy Fire Chief Paul Chivers on July 3rd, 2018. At this point, I would ask respectfully that this particular license be granted. It's pretty much a routine license given for buildings like this that have a large number of cars. This is 188 cars. And the storage that they're looking at is the storage of flammables within those cars, approximately 30 feet, 30 gallons per car. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other proponents here this evening? Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Would you like to speak? You can state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Joyce Rusus. I live at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, Unit P2-120. I'm new to the area. I'm not either for or against. I have some questions. The biggest question I have is, it talks about 188 vehicles, and it's a 145-unit apartment building. One of the questions is, I understand that there is zip cars involved. How many are zip cars rather than residential parking cars? And also, how many, I don't know how many two-bedroom units there are because out of that 188, how many are figured that there are at least two cars to a two-bedroom apartment unit? So there's questions about whether there's enough parking available for such a large building and not relying on having parking done on the Boulevard where it's badly overpopulated as it is. So I have questions in those areas, like how do you justify the 188 vehicles? Is that, how many of those are zip? How many are for two-bedroom, how many two-bedroom units are going to be accommodated with two vehicles? You know, that sort of thing.
So I'll tell you, that was voted on by the city council several meetings ago. Before they could get to this point, they had to get a permit by the city council to put the development that they're putting in there, and there are certain rules that the city of Revere has. I believe it's 1.0, anyone chiming? 1.75 cars? What is it? It depends on the bedrooms, but there is an equation that the city uses.
Right, yeah.
To establish how many cars can be in a property. So this developer went through all of these questions, and this has all been through the city council already. So if you touch base with the clerk, they can get you any minutes from that meeting or any more information. But this is only on the storage.
The storage, yes.
So we're past that part, unfortunately.
I'm looking for the justification of it, that's all.
Yes. So we can definitely provide you with more information if you give the clerk your information, but there's a formula the city uses, and I know Mr. O'Brien could help as well speak with you offline about it to explain how the city comes up with that and make sure that it's not a burden in the community, that it's following our guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. O'Brien, I appreciate your assistance with that. Thank you. Shut myself off. Any other opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any counselors? And again, I believe this will be going to public safety unless anyone wants to take it up? Nope? Okay. Sure. So we'll start at this end for a change. Counselor Zambudo, you can go first.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, I've said for many years, this should never be before the city council. Once it's approved by the fire department, it's a waste of, a waste of time. So with that said, I'm certainly going to support this tonight, and I'd like to vote this out tonight, and in the future, perhaps, someday, while I'm still here, we might get this changed so it doesn't come before the city council because it doesn't belong here. Thank you.
Agreed. Any other counselors? Counselor Tondo?
Thank you, Madam President. As Counselor Zambudo points out, it's a Chapter 148 licensing, all conducted by Lieutenant Chivers, who, by the way, I called to review the sprinkler schematic and that it was thoroughly vetted. I trust his expertise, and we'll vote affirmatively.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I know I've had a couple conversations with Counsel for this project, and I did vote against the project. As much as I have admiration for the Ash family and admiration for the developer himself, Matt Philbin and his team, it is something that, you know, I believe the residents down there don't want, even under the best of circumstances, would be to build by right and not have any type of variances, in this case, significantly less parking. So I'm going to stay consistent with my vote and vote against this 148 license. Thank you very much.
Any other, Counselor Novoski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm sorry. So we have a 148 license. I think it's required by law that we do this at the council level. We'd have to go into home rule petition and the whole rigmarole if we want to get rid, if we wanted to pass it off. But, you know, I have admiration for the contractor, for the developer, for the attorney, and, you know, I think they've worked hard. But granted, you know, there are some people that didn't want this project, but the project was already approved. This is something that, it's the storage of the gasoline in the vehicles. There's no propane tanks or gasoline pumps or anything like that. It's just the, you know, 17, 18 gallons per vehicle, and if there's zip cars, there's no gasoline, I believe. So it's all electric. So I think it's something that we, I think we're committed to do it, and I, you know, I'd like to see voted on tonight. Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, we will call the roll. Any other counselors? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Shall the city council approve the Chapter 148 license to enable the owner to park 188 vehicles in a parking garage at a 145-unit apartment building at 320 Revere Beach Boulevard? Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
No.
No. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Genino?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been approved.
Madam President, can suspension of rules please take up?
On suspension of rules? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. On reconsideration with hopes that it does not prevail? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Sandcastle at 172 Kimball Ave, LLC, 200 Winthrop Parkway, Revere, Mass., requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for above-ground storage of 18 gallons of gasoline contained within six vehicles to be, I'm sorry, that should read 180 gallons of gasoline, contained within six vehicles to be parked below a condominium building at 172 Kimball Ave.
This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents here this evening?
This is a much smaller project, this is for six cars at 172 Kimball Avenue. You may have seen, there's a new condominium building that's come up here. It used to be the old Sterns Hardware. They have fully sprinkled the garage for these six cars that would have a maximum of 180 gallons of gasoline, and the designs and plans have been approved by the Fire Department and signed by the chief, and we'd ask for your support.
Thank you, counselor. Any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors wishing to speak on this? Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. I support this wholeheartedly. Again, it goes back to the professionalism of Lieutenant Chivers, but more importantly, knowing the project, I'm definitely going to vote for it. Thank you.
Counselor Novosinski?
Thank you, Madam President. Since this isn't my ward, they've done an outstanding job building that in the condition that it's in, in the property and the shape and everything like that. They, they did do a good job on it, and may I just correct Counsel Rotundo that Deputy Chiver was the one that approved it. So, and I do appreciate Deputy Chiver for all his work and his professionalism in everything he does to make things right, and I think this is something we approved, and I think we almost have to do the 148. Thank you.
Well said. Any other councilors? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the Chapter 148 license to enable the owner to park six vehicles below a condominium building at 172 Kimball Ave? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent? Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been approved. Onto the zoning subcommittee report from July 9th, 2018.
We'll refer to Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to hold on to the moratorium, 18-219, and keep that in committee. As far as the hearing that was called to order regarding Bellevue Revere LLC, I'd like to accept all the orders from site plan review and the according changes. Likewise, as far as 18, we'll make that 18-223. Additionally, 18-224, we are going to deny the application by Leon Gasparitz for his nonconforming use for six units to an eight units for the following reasons. One, parking. Two, lack of an egress. Three, due to safety issues. And that will be it. As far as the hearing regarding 18-225, RBP Hotel LLC, 1359 Hooksett Road, Hooksett, New Hampshire, and their development request for a permitting of hotel rooms from 132 rooms to 152 rooms at 245 Revere Beach Parkway, that, that was passed affirmatively. More importantly, that we accept any recommendations from site plan review and the historical record from that council meeting. And that'll be all.
231? Second to stay in committee?
I believe that will stay in committee. We didn't speak on that. That has to do with the, and thank you, I did overlook that, so I do apologize at this moment, but, yeah, I'd like to keep that in committee, yeah, that has to do with the Airbnb. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll keep 19 and 31 in committee. Madam Clerk, if no councilors have any questions, if, first of all, if any councilors have any questions on, I'm gonna take these up separately. 223 for Bellevue Ave. Can we call the roll?
The conditions should be read into the record.
Can we, due to the findings of site plan review? Yes, you can.
The conditions submitted from, by site plan review for Lot 14 Bellevue Avenue are as follows. One, a street extension detail plan for Bellevue Ave shall be approved by the Fire Chief, City Engineer, and DPW, and a street extension layout plan must be approved by the Planning Board in accordance with Chapter 12.16, the revised ordinances of the City of Revere. Two, the street layout plan for Bellevue Ave shall include the installation of sewer, water, drainage, underground electrical, ornamental, streetlight posts, granite curbing, concrete sidewalks, and six trees, minimum caliper of three inches, to be planted behind sidewalk line along the frontage of the townhouse units. And, three, the City Engineer, DPW, and Fire Chief shall approve of the location of new hy- new fire hydrants and determination of the adequacy of the existing water and sewer on Bellevue Ave to service the proposed development.
Roll call with the conditions and findings of site plan review.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to construct four townhouse units on Lot 14 Bellevue Ave, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent? Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Next, we'll take up 22-4. With the stated conditions and the recommendation of the subcommittee's note was to vote unfavorably for this project, I believe?
There was no condition submitted by site plan review for number, for 542 Beach Street.
Mm-hmm. So, um, roll call?
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to expand a nonconforming six-unit residential use to an eight-residential use at 542 Beach Street? Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor Keith?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselski?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers is absent? Counselor Rizzo?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo? No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel President Janino? No, the special permit has been denied.
Next is 225, and this was favorably voted out by the committee and subject to the conditions and finding of site plan review. Madam Clerk, if you could read those conditions, and then we will call the roll.
Sure, and I just want to mention one condition from the zoning subcommittee from July 9th, and that was, this was determined by the subcommittee that the parking for the hotel only be used for guests, visitors, and employees, and no other use or enterprises.
We'll also add that condition to the roll call.
Okay.
So, subject to the findings of site plan review in the committee.
Okay. And the other conditions for site plan review that were submitted to the City Council on July 10th are as follows. One, the developer shall provide a transportation demand management plan for the proposed hotel, which shall include shuttle service for hotel guests to Logan Airport and the nearby T-stations. Two, all parking areas under the building shall be screened from view. Screening plans shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. Three, the building design and exterior materials plan, as well as the final landscaping and streets, street skate plan, shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The design of the building shall incorporate brick and stone elements throughout the building facade. And four, a fence and access gate shall be installed along Sales Creek to the north of the site adjacent to Sales Creek to prevent litter and debris from entering the creek from North Shore Road and Revere Beach Parkway, as well as from the site.
This time, I'll ask for a roll call with the, subject to the conditions and findings of site plan review in the Revere City Council zoning subcommittee.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to modify an existing PUD by increasing the number of permitted hotel rooms from 132 rooms to 152 rooms at 245 Revere Beach Parkway, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the Revere City Council? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent? Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the Revere City Council.
231 will stay in the zoning subcommittee. May I call for suspension of rules?
So moved.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. I apologize, Mr. Viskey, I didn't realize you were here for an item on the agenda. Please, if you ever heard of a department head, speak up, because if I missed you, it is my fault and I didn't know. So, we'll take up the communication from the auditor's office, which I believe is 19, 19 and 20. Sorry about that, please, next time, just give me a wave.
Sure, no problem.
I thought you were just here for the show.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
So, let's just go to that page, sorry. Calendar item number 19, communication from the auditor relative to the FY '18 free cash appropriation for end year close. Mr. Viskey?
Thank you. As you recall, last meeting, I was here, and we tried to do a bunch of entries to close out fiscal year '18. I was hoping that that would be the end of the entries, but after the last payroll of the year, which is a bulk payroll and, and all the year-end bills that we paid, we ended up with some appropriations that needed to be supplanted. I have two requests, one would be from free cash, and one is just year-end transfers to and from budgets. I'm happy to speak on any of the items here, but it is my hope and wish that we can get these appropriated today, because we're in the middle of closing the books, and we'd like to do so, but here to answer any questions on any of these transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Since he's here to speak on 19 and 20, I'll allow questions for either right now, and then we'll vote on each separately. So, any councilors have any questions on the transfers? Pretty simple, speak for themselves. All right, see, you got quite a crowd. Uh, roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the following free cash appropriations for the purpose of closing out FY '18? $153,860 to Medicare, $262,294 to outside legal services, $14,047 to tax title, and $19,842 to banking services. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent? Counselor Rizzo?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved.
Madam President?
Counselor?
Point of personal privilege.
Say your point, Counsel.
Through you to the auditor. My understanding that we have a $260,000 cost for outside legal services? Is that correct?
Counselor, I believe, I believe I asked if any councilors had any questions on the transfers.
Unfortunately, I had not been able to print that portion, that's why I had to ask.
Mr. Viskey?
Yeah, Counselor, actually, that's the deficit right now, after all the bills are paid.
So, Madam President, in the past, we have asked for detailed itemization of legal services, costs, haven't gotten it.
I don't believe I've been asked, and I also believe that has been distributed, but, again, that's of my knowledge.
I'll, I'll, I'll pull up the motion. I mean, so I'm gonna, I'll send you an email, and I'll ask for you that way, if not, I'll put it in as a motion.
Okay.
Next item is calendar item number 20, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 20, communication from the mayor or audit and auditor relative to the FY '18 end-of-year transfers.
Thank you, Counsel, and I just, with trying to use as little free cash as possible, we've had a couple of appropriations or pluses that I'd like to use to just balance out the remainder of the appropriations that would otherwise be in deficit and be free cash penalty, so this is basically a zero net effect that would transfer money to and from accounts.
Any councilors? Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve the end-of-year, end-of fiscal year 2018 general fund transfers as reported by the city auditor's letter dated July 9th, 2018? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent? Counselor Rizzo? Yes, Counselor Rotundo? Yes, Counselor Zambudo? Yes, Counselor, uh, sorry, Counsel President Janino? Yes, the transfers have been approved.
Thank you.
This time, we'll return to the regular order of business. Calendar item number 13, Public Works Subcommittee. Counselor Novosinski?
Thank you, Madam President. Hopefully, I can get through this quickly. On item number 13, 18-092, which was a request by Counselor Patch to have a state agency clean the culvert along Ask the Ave, and also, there was another motion, 18-149, by Counsel Rizzo, Patch, and Janino, about having an outside, an onsite visit to the culvert at Ask the Ave. Well, we've combined those two into one item, and we've requested to send a letter to our state delegation, specifically Senator Boncory, Representative Vincent, and ask, and also with a copy to the governor, asking that they help us push a site visit. I tried five different dates with emails that the clerks sent out, and we did, we only got one response from Representative Vincent to appear at one, and I wasn't gonna have a site visit with just one person. So, we're gonna try again, and hopefully, something will happen, but we're gonna ask that the delegation kind of force MassDOT and DCR to show up and help us out. So, that's where we are on that one right now.
Counselor, would you like to combine these and move the motion this evening and include the letter be included, so we can get it?
Yeah, but I don't wanna take this out of committee yet.
Oh.
I still wanna leave it in committee, so we can follow up on it later.
All right, so we'll combine them, leave it in committee, and I'll touch base with the clerk-
And the letters will go out.
...and you to get the letter out.
Yes.
Next is 15?
On...
The communication from James DiPaolo?
Yes, we placed that on file.
Okay.
And also 190, placed on file.
Okay.
And we did, just so, for clarification, we did have this open done in Public Works here to discuss that, and there were many discussed, there was issues that, as far as the cost of the building, you'd have to raise another floor, and it just wasn't on the taste of the committee to pursue it.
Perfect. So, next is...
18-232, the application of Anvoo American Dry Cleaner for a permit to install an awning at 363 Revere Street. I think I'm just gonna pass it off to Counsel Guanasso for a moment.
Thank you, Counselor. I met earlier this evening with Anvoo in reference, and he showed me the documentation for the awning. I have no objections to that whatsoever, and I'd be voting favorably for it.
And the committee has, was waiting for that to happen, and they voted to approve it.
Wonderful. Wonderful. So...
We need a vote on that.
Perfect. So the first two remain in committee. Sixteen and seventeen will be placed on file, and we will call the roll on calendar item eighteen three, two three two. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council grant the relief requested of the petitioner to install an awning at three sixty-three Revere Street? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent. Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the awning permit has been approved.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Counselors.
Good luck. Madam President, that's the end of my committee report.
On to communications.
Yep.
Madam Clerk has a lot of writing to do tonight.
Calendar item number eighteen, communication from the mayor relative to the park grant application for the renovation of Curtis Park.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution, and then we'll offer any discussion? That's okay. We have about a three-inch-thick council package this week, so bear with the clerk while we pull it together quickly.
A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program for construction and improvements to Curtis Park. Whereas Curtis Park is a community-wide asset, and improvements to this park is a priority, as evidenced in the most recent open space and recreation plan. And whereas Curtis Park is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-five, Section Three. And whereas the renovation of the baseball field, baseball amenities, and the basketball court at Curtis Park will greatly enhance recreational pursuits of this facility. And whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks throughout the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program. And whereas the Curtis Park renovation, estimated project cost is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, of which four hundred thousand dollars will be reimbursed to the city if the park grant is awarded, and one hundred thousand dollars will be allocated from community development block grant funds. The amount of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars shall be appropriated for the reconstruction project and must be paid in full prior to receiving the park grant reimbursement. The amount of eighty-nine thousand dollars must also be allocated by the city to complete this project based on estimated project cost from CDM Smith. The project shall follow the city bid process, and the estimates provided here were based on the best available benchmark information. Now, therefore, be it that, one, the mayor is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs if the grant is awarded, and, two, the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the city of Revere, including appropriation of the necessary funding, and, three, this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
Any counselors have any questions? Councilor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Another question was just a comment. Curtis Park was redone last twenty-two years ago, and it's seen its wear and tear, and a lot more people utilizing the facility, and we will also be re-striping it for soccer beside baseball and the basketball and a few issues with sewer and drainage that goes into the outfield. So it's something that I and the neighbors are looking for, and we'll probably put some lighting in there too, so, which will be restricted for time for the neighbors. So I appreciate everybody's help and look forward to this being passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to be known first that I'm a hundred percent for this grant. Played high school baseball at Curtis Park. I want the best for that team.
But the park was a little bigger, park was a little bigger back then, Counselor.
Much bigger. But I just, one thing caught my eye here. The amount of eighty-nine thousand must be allocated by the city to complete this project based on the estimated project cost from CDM Smith. I would, I just would hope that, again, we get one opinion on a project. I mean, we had them for St. Mary's Park, and there were several mistakes that still haven't been corrected down there, and I just want to know why. They seem to get all the work in the city, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors have any questions? Madam Clerk?
On the resolution, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers is absent. Councilor Rizzo? Yes, Councilor Rotundo? Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino? Yes, the resolution has been approved. Onto motions.
Before we go into motions, I just want to make note that Counselor Powers was absent this evening due to personal reasons and wishes that all of his motions will move forward. I also want to make note of a couple of different things. Number one, Rule Thirty. So if any counselors have any motions they wish to speak on, would you please let me know at this time? And also, Counselor Rotundo, if you'd let me know the three you'd like to speak on. So I'll give everyone a minute, and we'll go down the line. So if there's anything you'd like to speak on, please let me know. If you do not mention it at this time, the motions will be adopted.
Twenty-three, thirty-five.
All right, so we got twenty-three. Thirty-five. Counselor Keith says thirty-eight. Counselor McKenna? Counselor McKenna says thirty-four. Counselor Morabito? Do you need another minute? Need another minute? Counselor Novoselfsky?
Pass.
Pass. Counselor Patch?
I just have a late motion I have to put in for...
A late motion you have to put in, or a late motion that's in?
Oh, I have to. A verbal motion?
A verbal motion. Can we take that up at the end? All right, so we'll call that item number forty-one. I'm sorry, forty-two. Nope, I lied. Forty-three. All right, so forty-three. Counselor Rizzo? Pass. Counselor Rotundo, do you need another minute? Hold on one moment. Twenty-eight. Thirty-three. And thirty-nine. Counselor Zambudo?
Pass.
Yes. Counselor Morabito passes. All right, last call. I got nothing. I'm gonna pass. So at this time, we'll start with calendar item twenty-three. Really quick, before we begin, I'm just gonna read the rule onto the record. So according to Rule Twenty-eight, in accordance with the provisions of Rule Twenty-eight, if there are no objections, all of the motions, orders, or resolutions printed in this council calendar of the meeting of July twenty-third shall be approved as printed. And the other rules I mentioned were just, you know, no more, speaking of no more than three for Rule Eight, and thirty is just the number of motions you're allowed to submit for the meeting.
Madam President?
Counselor.
Number twenty-five, is that public hearing?
Correct. Number five will be ordered to a public hearing. Sorry, twenty-five will be ordered to a public hearing by default. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation. I hope that this will expedite the meeting a little bit, so we're not here until tomorrow. Calendar item number twenty-three.
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by Councilor Guanasso that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Carrie Abrams, owner of Kinship Floral, for donating a kidney to John Nucci.
Great motion. Counselor Guanasso?
Madam President, this is one of the best motions a human being can offer out to another person, the offering of life to an individual. I will save my comments for the night of the commendation, and again, to Carrie Abrams and her family. What a wonderful gesture and a wonderful thing to do for mankind. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rizzo?
Madam President, I'd like to commend Councilor Guanasso on the motion. I'll, I just want to say a few brief words, because of course, on the night of the motion, Councilor Guanasso will be presenting the citation. So I just want to say, I think the significance of this, and I'd like to recognize anybody out there that has been an organ donor or has considered themselves to be organ donors. It's the absolute gift of life, as we all know. And in this case, and I believe the reason why Councilor Guanasso is putting this motion forward is because we have two people involved here that have strong connections to the city of Revere. Carrie, of course, grew up here, and she's a business owner here, and John Nucci represented the city of Revere when he was the clerk of Suffolk Superior Court for many years, and he really was in dire need. And for two people that we all know, I think the majority of us here know personally, to have that match and not be a family member is absolutely remarkable, and it's tremendous that they're both doing extremely well, and I think this is an excellent motion. Thank you for that, Councilor Guanasso.
Counselor Zambudo, followed by Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think it's been said how extraordinary it is for someone to offer the gift of life, and my colleague to my right mentioned what the odds are that two friends would actually be a match. And I was overwhelmed when I found out about this, and, 'cause, you know, I said to Carrie, and I said to her father that, you know, this is such an extraordinary thing to do. It's just overwhelming, and John Nucci is a dear friend of many years, and I'm just, I'm so proud of her for stepping up and doing this, and it takes a very special person to do something like that. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I grew up with, well, hung around with John Nucci when we were very young, and I had Carrie Abrams as a student. And I just want to say that the bravery that Carrie displayed was remarkable. So I just think this motion is a great motion, and I commend the both of them, Carrie and John. Thank you. And Counselor Guanasso for putting that in.
Anybody else? If I may briefly, I'll save my comments for the night, but I just want to say, great job on behalf of the counselor, and I'm so glad to hear they're both doing well. Carrie's a phenomenal person, and I look forward to giving her the accolades that she so well deserves. This will, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Madam President, if I may, can I, sorry to withdraw my pass and take up twenty-four and twenty-nine, please?
Twenty-four and twenty-nine. You may. Twenty-four. So you're gonna take it up on behalf of Counselor Rotundo?
Yeah, I want to discuss it, yes.
So... So Counselor Novoselfsky will be offering up two of Counselor Rotundo's motions, twenty-four and twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. Calendar number twenty-four. Madam Clerk?
Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor requests the management of the beach house to appear before the Revere City Council to discuss the event of July Fourth, in which over seven cruisers from Revere Police Department and state police responded to an incident, and to discuss how to prevent such incidents in the future, a representative from RPD shall be requested to appear as well.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I did some investigation on this, and I've spoken to the state police and members of the Revere Police, and there was really nothing that happened there, other than too many people that were unauthorized on the property showed up. The security person asked them to leave, and they gave him a hard time, so he called police right away. Nothing happened. They all left, and by the time the state police got there, which was like three minutes later, everybody was gone already. I don't think there's anything here that this city council has to get involved in. And it's just something that it's, honestly, it's a waste of time. And I don't think it should be coming up as a city council issue. It was solved, there was no arrests, there were no fist thrown, it was just a little gathering that some guys didn't want to leave, and when the police showed up, they just walked out the door. There was nothing, nothing that happened. So they know the rules, the people that invited them, they were invited on the property, but the people that rented there were told what the rule was. They violated the rules, and they were handled, it was handled onsite very quietly. So I don't think that anything should come of it, and we don't have to bring it up here at the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Actually, I was there, so I seen the whole thing. That's not exactly how it happened. In fact, the woman that I was with, we ended up leaving that area, going down to Antonius because it was so violent. The people actually snuck in. There was no one there ensuring who went into the pool area or not. That was the big issue. Over seven Revere cruisers went down there, an equal amount of state police. I believe one of the troopers actually ended up in the hospital. More importantly, just recently, a gentleman from that particular building was arraigned for both gun and cocaine charges. In fact, there's a little bit of a problem there, and I'm not sure that that information was provided to Counselor Novoselfsky, and I'm glad that you brought it up so that I could provide that to the council. That was my impression at that time, and I was kind of disappointed at the service at Antonius that night, 'cause it was being disrupted by the police. Literally, it was that present, and you know the distance between the two buildings. So it was a significant issue that night, and whoever might have said that to you might be downplaying it, but I was literally there, and that's the only reason why I brought it up. Matter of fact, I typed it on my phone the night it took place.
With all due respect, Madam President, I talked to some honorable police folks between the troopers and Revere, and every single one of them at that location said nothing was out of hand, other than them showing up and not, and being asked to leave. They're only allowed to bring in so many people, and what happened afterwards is nothing, is still not our concern. And I believe our police folks, and I don't think we should be bringing anybody up here on that matter. It's not a city council issue. Thank you.
Madam President, I can reach out to the management and meet with them and make arrangements so something like this doesn't happen again, but I don't think we need to bring everybody up to the city council. I'll address it.
I'm comfortable with that, Chief. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Sorry, Madam Chair, but I'll tell you, I have, I have some inside information in Counselor from, what, two is a lot closer to what really happened than my Counselor Lides on my left, but that's, that's just a fact. Thank you.
Counselors, with all due respect, I wasn't there, and I don't believe that the other ten of us were either, so it's all he said, she said at this point. I trust our police chief to do his due diligence and look into it, and I recommend we place this on file, and the counselor, the counselors that are concerned can touch base with the chief following the meeting. Any objection to that?
None. Thank you.
Placed on file. Calendar item, calendar item twenty-five will be ordered to a public hearing. Calendar items twenty-six and twenty-seven were skipped, so we're gonna jump down to twenty-eight. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, speaking to several people involved with this particular issue regarding housing, whether people realize it right now, if you are a combat veteran or a veteran, you are not the highest priority for housing, and that is a CMR issue. I would like to support Representative Vincent in filing legislation to change the CMR. Veterans need to be the top priority here. You know, we take many people in from around the world, and they get housing before our people that have provided us the very ability to debate the issue of Revere Beach. And that said, I hope that the people on this council can support this, because quite frankly, as far as I'm concerned, if you raise your right hand and devote yourself to this country at any time, under service of our country, under arms of our country, you should be afforded the right to the highest priority to obtain housing. Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Counselor, thank you very much. At least we agree on this one. But until last year, veterans were like twelfth on the list, and thanks to Secretary Urina, they were moved up to fourth on the list. And that affects our Revere Housing Authority potential of putting our veterans on board. So I think there's a great motion. I think we ought to move it, and hopefully, our state delegation can make it happen. Thank you.
Anybody else? If I may briefly, I think our veterans should always be our number one priority, and I wholeheartedly support this. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item twenty-nine.
Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city of Revere mitigate for ten percent affordable housing within the scope of any proposed housing at Suffolk Downs.
Counselor Novoselfsky has picked up this motion on behalf of Counselor Rotundo, so I will refer to Counselor Novoselfsky. I will refer to Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, you know, we've been going to a lot of meetings with HYM down at Suffolk Downs, and Counselor Rotundo was there last week. Thank God, he changes hours. He puts them all in the line. But I believe that they've already committed to 15% of housing. So I
I thought that was for East Boston side. I don't
I think it's for the whole package.
Well, if it's for the whole package, then that's great.
Right. So, you know, I believe
Put this on file, then.
Yeah, this is moot. Thank you.
Placed on file. We will skip over 30, 31, and 32. Moving on to 33. Counselor, I'll have the clerk read it, and then Counselor Rotundo.
Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the city of Revere change its building code to mandate any building with 50 units or more must maintain an AED in its lobby.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a very low-cost, simple device that anybody can use if they can read. And it is a lifesaving device. We have one in every municipal building. Having this here, and the various buildings that are going up within the city, considering the age of our population, clearly, this would be well worth it. And again, it's a simple device to maintain, it's a simple device to use. And I would just hope that we could do so.
Counselor Novosolsky?
Thank you, Madam President. To you, to Counselor Rotundo. Any reason why we pick 50?
I just didn't want to fight over 30.
I think it should be 30. I should, I think it should be less, because I think every building should have it. You know, and if we want to force them into a lower number, that's fine with me. But I think it's an important issue. It should be there. And like you said, it's a small item. We have one here in City Hall that we've had here for at least 10 years. And I think it's a good thing, and I think we ought to lower the number.
I'm more than happy to have this go in the committee. We can work this out, obviously have the chief involved.
Counsel, I think that's a great motion. And I'll just bring it to site plan, and we'll make it an order of conditions.
Excellent.
On the projects.
And you know something?
We can ask.
It's a very, it's a very low-cost issue. You can get one for $600.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Anybody else?
What are we going to do with?
This will go to public safety?
Okay.
Public safety?
Yep. Thank you.
And I just want to, really quickly, if I may, I had the opportunity of doing the CPR class with the city nurse, Cal Donovan, several years ago, I believe with Counselor Rizzo. And I will say, it was a very rewarding experience, and she teaches you how to use this machine. And I think that, shameless plug, but anyone that has the opportunity to take that class, I highly recommend it, because it's really worth it. And that is my thoughts. On that note, this will go to public safety.
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor requests the appropriate entity responsible for the reconstruction of the islands on Revere Beach Parkway at the intersections of North Shore Road and Winthrop Parkway to remove all barrels, cones, and other construction materials as soon as possible. Construction has not taken place in several weeks, and the area was left in complete disarray.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me? Oh, no one calls me Vice President, but thank you. I know there's been construction there for a couple of months. You know, I know they're not finished with the construction. But they left everything in disarray. The islands have wood on it, they have concrete on it, they have tree branches on it. At least clean it up. They've got barrels, cones everywhere. And then, when you're coming into Beachmont, there's a four-foot divot that you, someone's going to take their rear end out of their car off. I've asked for a metal plate and to put over the divot, because there is a water pipe there. And it's not Revere's district, it's DOT's district, it's DCR district. But this has been like this for the last, I'd say, three weeks. And you can't even get into Beachmont. People that are, it's just, it's not called for. So I'm asking whoever is responsible for the conditions of these islands, the cones, the barrels that were just left there, clean it up. We just had 700,000 people that came to Revere Beach, and they rode by this disgusting, disarrayed, disarrayed island. And I just want to give heads, a shout out to Chief Guido, because I asked, I called him up, and I asked him to move that RV that was all graffitied. And people, before the people came into Revere Beach, and he did move it right away. So if it's DCR, or if it's, you know, this DPW, or if it's DOT, I would like to put a divot, I mean, a metal plate over that divot and have the islands cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors?
Madam President, if I may, with all due respect to Counselor McKenna, I have a problem with removing those barrels, because, you know, they're protecting, they're protecting current construction. As far as filling the divot, I think, you know, believe it or not, I believe that's a gate issue, because that's where they're putting in the new controls and the new traffic lights. So it is from that. I know it's from that, because I saw it. I was there. I saw it. I saw it. I saw it. It's a trench, a trench that is sunken. And yes, I think that should be taken care of. But I wouldn't remove all the barrels, because I think you're putting more people at jeopardy by removing them. They want to clean up the islands, yes. But I wouldn't, honestly, I'm a public safety guy. I see what's over there. I go by it almost every day. And I'd just be cautious about removing those barrels, because they are in the middle of a construction area. So I would rethink exactly what we want to do here.
Madam President, to my colleague on my left-hand side, these barrels are random. They're not in any specific place that is dangerous to the public. They're just on sidewalk. There's, there were one barrels on Winthrop Ave, couple of cones were on Winthrop Ave. I would never remove a barrel if it was a safety, safety concern. These are just random barrels. And I'm not talking about across the street from North Shore Road, I'm talking about on Winthrop Ave. The divot is going to hurt someone. You can put a metal plate over it. If it's, there is a water pipe there, so it can't get asphalted. But let me tell you something, something needs to be put there, even if it's a temporary fix. Right now, they can remove the metal plate, you know, in a 20-minute span. So it's going to hurt someone's car. And I just think, I mean, how long are you going to wait to keep a divot there? You know, how long are you going to wait? You're going to, are we going to wait another two weeks, three weeks? No, we can't do this. It's wrong.
Counselors, to both gratification, can I make a recommendation that we amend the motion to, in the interest of public safety, remove all barrels, cones, and other construction materials that are not necessary as soon as possible? Everyone happy?
Yes, and just two other corrections. Number one, I'd like to have North Shore Road removed, and change Winthrop Parkway to Winthrop Ave.
Do you have any?
No.
All right. On the motion as amended, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Very happy with the synergy happening tonight. This is very nice, guys.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Counselor Gwinasso, that the mayor requests the traffic commission to approve the installation of a "No Parking Here to Corner" sign on Rumney Road at the intersection of Broadway.
Counselor Gwinasso?
Madam President, Rumney Road is a very heavily trafficked area. And when both sides of that street are people parked upon, it's almost impossible for public safety to exist. So I ask that there be no parking from here to corner on both sides of Rumney Road on the Broadway side. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else?
And if everybody on this council signs off on this, maybe Traffic Board finally do something for Ward 3.
Madam President?
Counselor?
Just a clarification to Counselor Gwinasso. There is a state law that has "No Parking Here to Corner" 20 feet from any intersection. And we do not have to pass a law for that. All you have to do is ask the Public Works to install that sign at that location. So make it easier for you. We don't have to go, we don't have to go through traffic.
Thank God. And so, Madam Clerk, can you send a communication to have that, the signs put up immediately? Thank you.
So this will be put to a 3-1-1 request, city clerk, on behalf of Counselor Gwinasso. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. So 36 and 37 are skipped. We will move on to 38, 18-262. Motion presented by Counselor Keith, that the mayor requests all utility companies or contractors performing non-emergency utility and construction projects involving street opening, pole work, power lines, that may disrupt residences or businesses, to give a butters a minimum of seven days' notice prior to the commencement of work. Notice shall include scope of work. Counselor Keith, great motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that some of the departments do a very good job of communicating specifically to the ward counselors or the neighborhood in regards to projects. The water process has been pretty good. But recently, I'm just noticing, like I had mentioned earlier, this evening, we had a lot of gas line work being done on Dale Street Arnold. And no one, I didn't even know about it until I saw the trucks ripping up the streets. And then again, that work has been ceased because of the strike or because of the lockout. And now, again, there's been some utility work done on Dale Street. They're doing a lot of pole work along the, along the ward. And people have been temporarily out of power for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, 20 minutes, which I understand if the work needs to be done, they may need to temporarily disconnect power. But they don't know what's happening. So whether they're at home, or they're outside, they're all of a sudden, they're losing power for 20 minutes. It'd be nice to just know and prepare. What if you're having a party? What if you're having, you know, what if it's, you know, last week, it was 95, even 100-degree days. What if you need that air conditioner going, or you wanted to prepare to go out for that time? What if you had a fish tank, and you know, the bubble went? I don't know, you know. But it would just be nice to get that notification. Certainly, I think the ward counselors who do a lot of communicating in the area, it would be nice to know those projects happening as well. So I think we should hold these companies to a higher standard. Thank you.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 40, sorry, 39.
Calendar item number 39, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor, fire chief, and chief of police meet in executive session to speak about the security profile at the various successful Sandcastle event.
Thank you, Madam President. I think going in executive session with everybody would be a good thing later on in the week, the month, what have you. This has now blossomed into something bigger than what it was last year and the year before. So perhaps we can do a little bit of planning, perhaps look at other things, and I'll talk about that during executive session.
Counselor, my recommendation is we have a committee, the whole meeting, at 5:00 before the next meeting. We can have an executive session at 4:30 before the next meeting, if that works for everyone? No? Yeah, we have, we have a whole year to work on it. So maybe in September, before one of the meetings, we can figure it out.
Madam Chair, President, I just want to address the council for a minute. I'm well aware, when, when on Saturday, I sat in the traffic myself. I don't know if we need executive session, but I did discuss with the mayor today. I know the council and the mayor appropriate money for the Sandcastle event. I asked him if we could shift some of that funding next year. This event's almost like an Espinat event now. And we're probably going to have to do something that's never been done before. I'm going to have to order in all off-duty personnel to come to work for this event in the future, if it continues. And there'll be a sizable cost, and we'll cover every intersection and every traffic location. It won't be perfect. And, but it will at least be better than what happened on Saturday. And I'm well aware of the congestion and the gridlock. And the event has grown expeditiously, and it's time that we do address this. All, all the agencies, DCR, State Police, Revere Police. And I just want to put in perspective, the fireworks on the 4th of July at the Espinat, there's over 600 police. We've run the Sandcastle event for the past 15 years with maybe 30 or 40 police. So I think we've done a really good job. But it's come to a point where we need to do a better job, and I'm well aware of it. And I look forward to working on a solution for this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor?
Thank you. I couldn't agree with you more. Personally, I think perhaps, maybe we could think of seeking some type of national events status, and hopefully get some federal and perhaps maybe some state money. More importantly, better coordinate with the various parking lots throughout the city, that as well as the various schools, set up shuttles within our system itself. So for example, we have six wards in this community, we have multiple schools. We can tell our residents, stay home, I mean, keep your car at home, grab a shuttle coming from one of the local schools, set up traffic, and pre-educate the population. If you're coming to Revere, bring your car to Suffolk Downs, bring your car to Wonderland Dog Track, bring your car to Necco, bring your car to Bell Circle. Find all the various parking facilities that we can have, and utilize a consistent process of shuttling. So that way, we don't have the same issue that we had recently. And aberrant as it might have been, you know, we've all sat in traffic, we've all seen what happened. So I think that because this is now bigger than what it was, we can plan accordingly.
Counsel, I just want to, I know it's late, I just want to say one more thing. The problem is not the Revere residents. It's the thousands and thousands of residents that are coming from outside the city. Anyone in Revere knows how to get down the beach. They take an Uber. A lot of people walk. It's the outside is this, it's on the radio, it's on television. It's become a massive event.
Totally agree with you. Just again, trying to focus less people.
Counselor Rotundo, can I make a recommendation that instead of executive session, we could put this in public safety committee, so we can work with the police department, and the fire departments, and committee?
Yeah, I have no problem. I just said that because I didn't know if we were willing to talk about strategies or anything like that.
Understood. If there are any strategic or specific public safety concerns, we can always take them up in executive session. But I think public safety is an appropriate venue for this. Counselor Keith, followed by Counselor Gwinasso?
Thank you, Madam President. Since this will be discussed in subcommittee, I'll make it brief. I just want to make sure that, and I know everyone agrees with this, although there were some traffic jams, the event was an unbelievable success. And I know the hard work that was put in by the people that run the Sandcastles organization, many members of this community, but also including the state and the DCR. It was a phenomenal event. I did too, sit in the traffic, because I was in a little bit of a pickle getting there that night. But I still had a fantastic time, even though I spent some time getting there. But I just want to commend the people that put this event together. I'm already looking forward to it next year. And I have people that I work with in Boston and out of the state, many from Boston and South Shore that had come down. One came down on a boat, they had a great time, parked at the Winthrop Yacht Club, and they walked over. So fantastic event. And I think it's awesome that we can showcase our city that way. Thank you.
Counselor Gwinasso?
The obvious, Madam President, is that it was a very successful event. The unfortunate part about it is, and I shared the pain of all the residents in the city, because I wasn't involved with it. I was stuck in it too. But the most primary concern of all of us should be public safety. God forbid, fire apparatus or police personnel have to go, ambulance has to get to a location, you couldn't get anywhere. I was in a situation where there was no way I could turn, other than go over a sidewalk and try to loop around, because I didn't know the areas. But these other folks were getting angry. It was, it was a real hostile situation. And I don't blame them. But the pain is all given to our residents, for a lot of people to enjoy. Now, we had over 700,000, I don't know the number to be true. But I never, in all the years that we've had the Sandcastle events, or any events down Revere Beach, that I have folks come and park all around my home. I never saw this, and all up and down Revere Street. Now, that's a heck of a walk from my home to the event. So that, it just shows you that this has gone to great proportions, that we can't handle in the manner we have been doing it. And I'm so happy to hear the chief say, we do, we do need additional personnel. Because at each juncture, there were people blocking passage for other cars to go through. So everybody will take their time and do course. But when someone cuts off and just blocks the area, that's when tempers flare, and that's when problems exist, and that's where public safety personnel can't do their job to get to the homes. So I think we need to job to get to the homes. So I think we need to work on this. And we have a few months to work on this. This is not something that should be decided in Boston. It should be decided here in Revere, because we live with it. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Madam President. There's no doubt, you know, with 700 to 800,000 people coming into this city in two days, that something isn't going to happen like what it did. Granted, there was a lot of traffic, and there were a lot of rude people around that just don't want to sneak in every inch they can and cause this gridlock. And I just don't want to take anything away from the event and everything that goes with it. It was an outstanding thing. It's an international event. You have people coming in from all over the world to see Revere, Massachusetts. And unfortunately, it's, you know, there's some people that are just rude. And I, we can handle it. And I have faith in our police department. I have faith in our state police. And I think even maybe we think about bringing the transit in, and having them work in it, because there's a lot of key issues. So I look forward to working with everybody and do this calmly without beating on anybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? If I may, very briefly, I think that it was a great event. It was an incredibly successful event. And it's a huge testament to all the people that worked so hard all year round for this one weekend. And I, like everybody else, sat in traffic. I actually left, went up through the linway, came down, went down 107 to get home, and it still took time. So it happens. We dealt with it, but I think it was worth it. And I look forward to working on this in committee to find a really safe and good option for our city and for our residents on the beach, to make sure everyone always feels safe and that we're looking out for their best interests. Anybody else?
Hi, Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. I just want to commend the Revere Beach partnership and the public safety officials for what they had to deal with, and a great job. One thing that I've been stressing for a while, and now we have a great leader in the Senate who's in charge of transportation, we need to get on the state to try and get a platform for the commuter rail, a stop at Wonderland, that will alleviate a lot of people that come to the Sandcastles, that come from the North Shore, the South Shore. And we would have incentives for people to take the commuter rail down. We have commuter rail stations in Chelsea. We have commuter rail stations in Lynn. They're all platforms. We have them in Beverly. It doesn't take a lot of money. I know there's a bond bill to put it. Well, listen, we have delegation. We have Joe Boncorre's in charge of transportation. We have the great Sandcastle Festival here now. It's another reason why there should be a, a platform. It doesn't have to be a station. It's just a platform that has to be put there. The commuter rail goes through Revere. I believe we are one of the only states, the only cities that the commuter rail goes through here in the North Shore that doesn't have a stop. They go right through here. That would alleviate a lot of, a lot of traffic, not only, not only for the Sandcastles, but a lot of the traffic coming to Revere on a daily basis. So I think that could be something that can be discussed when you have your subcommittee.
Very well noted. Public safety. So calendar items 40, 41, and 42 are all taken up earlier, out of order. Last, we'll take up calendar number 43, a late communication by Counselor Patch.
Late motion by Counselor Patch, that the mayor request the DPW to look into the feasibility of installing a new sidewalk and retaining wall at 55 Tuscano Ave due to the severe flooding conditions.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. It really speaks for itself. I know that the resident that had addressed spoke with the superintendent at the DBW Subcommittee after the Subcommittee. So, but we'll just see what develops there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There's no further business. I will just take a point of personal privilege to note that the next city council meeting will be held on August 27. As you're aware, we're in our summer recess right now, so we meet once a month in July and August. We'll start at 5:00 that evening for a committee of the whole meeting. I also want to make note that between now and then, there's one event, the Row for Revere event's coming up, and that will be on August 11. And that's a great event for a great cause. So if anyone has any questions, check out the city website. And as always, check out the city calendar on the city website for any information on events that may not be posted. And Botchy on the Beach is also coming up. I'm sorry, August 18. I have to add that in my calendar as well. I didn't have that one down. So Row, the Row Row Revere will be on the 11th, and Botchy on the Beach on the 18th. I hope you all have a great and safe rest of the summer, and we look forward to seeing you again on August 22nd, 27. This concludes our meeting.